17, 2024.
Recording in progress.
To order, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Bowles.
Here.
Councilmember Big Stick.
Present.
Councilmember Beer.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer.
Present.
Mayor Votarlos.
Here.
Now I'm going to read the land acknowledgement. The City of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramatou Shaloni people, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Ramatou Shaloni people for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth. As the indigenous protectors of this land and in accordance with their traditions, the Ramatou Shaloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all people who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first people and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatou Shaloni people. And now we'll have a salute to the flag by Councilmember Bowles.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll wait one minute. And city attorney, do we have a closed session report?
No reportable action.
Thank you. And we're going to go right into the public hearing. And this is consideration of a resolution of the city council, the City of Pacifica certifying that the revised certification draft local coastal land use plan with alternative modifications is intended to be carried out in a manner fully in conformity with the modifications. And I'm, I'll stop there.
Madam Mayor, if I may. I wanted to acknowledge that after a while being gone, you are back here with us in the flesh and even running the meeting. And I wanted to welcome you back. You have been missed.
Thank you. Thank you.
I can turn red.
I know.
Okay, and we have a staff report, please. I can feel it.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, council members. Stephanie Cervantes, Acting Deputy Director with the Community Development Department. We, today's meeting is really a short staff presentation. We are really set up to go through that detailed conversation to address the final issues. That's really the, what we're hoping is the bulk of this meeting. And so I will defer back to the council to see how you want to proceed with that. But I will just very briefly outline the final items. And before I do that, I don't want to repeat myself, but again, just want to emphasize the importance of having a certified LCLUP for the city. There are a number of planning items, including redevelopment of this site, the Sharp Park specific plan, redevelopment of the library just down the street, many other projects throughout the coastline that are really perhaps not dependent, but it will make the permitting process much easier if we have an updated and certified LCLUP. So really just emphasize that again, just the benefits to the city and if we can get past this, this process. So this is just the, the list of the items that staff has identified as the, the final items that the council needs to discuss and essentially give a blessing in order for the city to, for the council to adopt the document and recommend transmitted to California Coastal Commission. So I can start going through the, the detailed discussion or I can turn it back to the council at this point.
Council, details?
I have a council question.
Okay, go ahead, it's okay.
There were some public comments, a little confused about the agenda because the table wasn't there and the, you know, the main book that has all the, sorry if I'm not talking into the, that has all the full policies maybe didn't have highlights. So, I mean, can you, can you tell us what's changed? Are we, are you, and, and whether, whether it was a change in the staff report so that people would have a chance to look at it ahead of time?
So any changes from the August 12 staff report to today's staff, to today's document, I will go through in detail. There are some minor changes. As you probably recall, the city received a letter from California Coastal Commission a few days prior to the August 12 letter. We have had several conversations with Coastal Commission's staff. And we think that the items that were discussed in that letter, we've, we've reached an understanding on everything. And so essentially those are the items that we, I will go through a detailed analysis with, with the council.
Okay, so we haven't seen those, they weren't in the staff report at all. We're, we're gonna all see those fresh today.
Yes.
Are you saying that the items on our list right now are items you're gonna comment on from that correspondence with coastal staff in August?
Some of them, yes. And some of the other items on this list are just items that the council has not discussed yet.
Okay.
And then if we have other policies, I have a few that I'd like to go back to. So that's, we can do that at the end after going through what you have on your list?
Correct.
Okay. And I, I just want to say, there's still, there seems to still be a lot of confusion in the community, like the tsunamis, for example. I, I don't know, I mean, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna take public comment tonight, but I don't know if it's worth, like, asking staff before public comment to try to explain those again, so.
Well, I have a question about.
Public comment, we're taking public comment tonight? Is that something the camp, the council's discussing, Mayor? Or is it?
There is no place on my agenda for public comment. But we need to take public comment after.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so when does it make sense? Because, I mean, these policies, the public won't have a chance to know anything about until, so, I mean, definitely after Stephanie's presentation, going through all of them. So we're not necessarily deliberating about each one, we're just gonna hear a presentation to start with?
And then I guess if there's questions, clarifying questions or any confusion, is that your thought, Mayor Votarlos?
Yes. For right now. And then we'll take public comment and then we'll come back again.
Okay. Yeah, it makes sense.
So, forgive me. I know that we got us through a specific number of the modifications and whatnot as we were working down the list. I don't quite recall, but I'm sure Ms. Cervantes remembers specifically where on the list we last left off. Are we going to be completing the list of the, the matrix before or after public comment as you're envisioning it? It certainly strikes me as being a good idea to finish working through the matrix and asking whatever questions of staff for the sake of clarification before getting public comment and then deliberating, but that's the way I'm looking at it.
So that the public can also hear the items that we haven't already gone through before they come up and ask their questions? Okay, sounds good.
Okay, thank you. So continuing with the matrix. An apologies, my matrix got a little fumbled in my bag. So the matrix, we're gonna be referring to the packet from the August 12 meeting and it's, the summary table, it's gonna be packet page 379.
Can you tell us what item that is? Because I'm working on an older packet.
Me too. Me too.
Yeah, so it's gonna be, start with modification 6.57 for policy CRI 39. All right, so this policy.
Wasn't in today's packet.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, Mary doesn't have that.
It's okay, I got it.
It's from the.
Don't worry.
I can share, too.
All right, at the August 12 meeting, we had started discussion of this policy, CRI 39. So this policy does, it's for development directly inland of the public infrastructure in the shoreline resiliency, in the special shoreline resiliency areas. And this policy essentially is stating that development that is in the two special resiliency areas may depend on the existing shoreline protection structure in the area that is existing at the time of permit application to help demonstrate that it meets the requirements of CRI 19 and CRI 20, which are the technical reporting and the citing and design policies that are applicable to development in the coastal vulnerability areas. So this is a policy that would allow those, that development to use any protection provided by the existing shoreline protection into that technical reporting and into the design of that development. If we move on to modification 6.58, this is the armoring and special resiliency areas policy. So this policy was specifically drafted to address continued maintenance of the two shoreline, of the two existing shoreline protection structures in both of these areas, both in the Rockaway area and in the West Sharp Park area. And so this policy does allow for repair, maintenance, enhancement, realignment, redevelopment, and replacement of the shoreline protection structure that is existing at the time. And it also, it gives an allowance for minor extensions in order to fill gaps or otherwise ensure overall shoreline protection structure is effective, may be approved when required to protect public infrastructure. So this policy is very important for the future of the Beach Boulevard infrastructure resiliency project because it does allow for redevelopment replacement. And it also allows for the minor extension in order to fill gaps. And so this will specifically address permitting for the Clarendon Gap.
I'd like to take a step back and look at the maps again and understand the armoring that is in these locations, if you don't mind.
City Clerk, can we go to the August 12 PowerPoint, please?
And maybe starting with the Rockaway one. So I had asked some time ago to, to look at the permit records for the armoring in here to better understand, like, who owns what and what the maintenance conditions are. And so I can't point to where people can see it, but starting at the parking lot on the south end, my understanding is there's no armoring there now.
By the parking lot? No, that is, that's correct.
So, okay, so, I mean, is, that does, so that doesn't make sense to me if we're saying that it's development behind the armoring, but then there's no armoring at that line. I mean, is that gonna mean that we can put armoring at that line?
No, it does not mean that the city cannot put armoring there. It, the, the line is just essentially demonstrating where the, the neighborhood starts and ends here and where the, the policies for the shoreline protection could apply. This is not a map showing the existing shoreline protection structure, it's a line to identify where the shoreline, the special resiliency areas are.
And I think, if I may, that when you look at the map, where that little tiny square is on the other side of San Marlowe Way, that's pub, wastewater infrastructure. Am I right? So is that the connection between the, the protection area of the SSRA and this, that's part of our infrastructure that we're wanting to be able to maintain and protect, right?
Yes. In conversations with California coastal staff to determine where the boundaries would be, we, city staff, we tried to extend the, the boundary as far as possible in order to give protection to as many properties as possible. And so coastal staff was a minimal to extending the line further north in order to protect the existing city infrastructure.
And just to clarify, just because the line is there for the SSRAs doesn't mean that's where we're gonna be armoring.
Correct.
Right? Because I think there's a misconception in the community that we want to add more armoring. And so I want to make sure that that's super clear.
The adding more armoring is separate from the SSRAs. The SSRAs are only applicable to existing shoreline protection.
But, but there is some provision for expanding, like you were just saying, at Clarendon, where there isn't currently armoring, so, so.
Yeah, so there's, there's policies that will allow the city to repair, replace, fill gaps as needed, but the SSRA policies will not apply to future fills. If the city in the future decides to create a fill, create more armoring, at that point those policies may apply. They will not apply at this moment.
Okay. And then just to educate people, so from that little curvy line by the parking lot at NIX and actually the other hotel there, that's interesting. So there is some armoring there. I don't know if it goes to the, maybe it would be helpful to look at a Google map, too, but the, the NIX permit is probably just, you know, halfway on that straight line and then across. And, again, that, so this is not public infrastructure, this is private infrastructure. Am I correct?
The shoreline, the existing shoreline essentially south of Rockaway is owned by NIX.
Right. And has, has, is that being maintained? I, the, the permit conditions required certain things done every year and I, you know, I don't know, I haven't gotten that information about whether there's any violations or, you know, I'm just questioning whether, whether you can rely on any armoring because it's there or whether it actually needs to be legally permitted and, and, you know, doesn't, doesn't have violations that the coastal commission would object to.
Yes, completely understand. So in recent conversations with coastal staff regarding the shoreline protection in this area, they provided the, the permits. They did not indicate that there was any violations on, on those permits. Whether the, there is ongoing maintenance on the, especially on NIX, the, the seawall in front of NIX, that would really be a question for California coastal commission staff because it's my understanding that the permit requires monitoring reports to the California coastal commission. It does not require monitoring reports to the city. I would assume that if materials are being, being submitted to coastal staff, that they would share those materials with us, but I have not received anything in my time here. I would also assume that if there's violations, that coastal staff would reach out to city staff for support for that, and we have not received anything.
Okay. I just, I just want to make sure we're protecting ourselves legally and not allowing things to happen and even changes to that armoring if it's not, you know, per their permit. Because, yeah, as, as you said, the monitoring program is actually required yearly for that project. And for the armoring that's north of that, from Rockaway Beach Avenue at the dead end up to the parking lot, that's city property, but that, and that also required a monitoring program every five years. And I understand we can't find those, any records of that having been done. So it seems some of these things need to be sorted out before, before these, might, might need to be sorted out before these policies come into effect. Anyway, I, we can, we can check with the coastal commission on that. But, and, and then I want to get back to the, I think this was said at the last meeting and I couldn't find it written anywhere. Originally, when we talked about reliance on the shoreline armoring, I know Christian said that it was up to the applicant to actually do the engineering, just to verify that the, you know, whatever protection, how, whatever remaining life that the armoring would actually provide. And then at the last time, I believe it was said that now we are taking on that responsibility. So I want to clarify where that is and exactly what it says about that. But, but then also, second question, I mean, we don't own that armoring at NIX, so how could we even possibly do that? We have no control over the permit or about whether it's gonna be maintained. You know, how, how does that actually work in practice?
Yes, my recollection is that the conversation was that the city could provide information to applicants. It would likely standardize information. So for example, the city could determine the, the remaining life of an existing seawall that we own and just have that information available for the public when development came. There's also the option that applicants could do their own essentially analysis of that. For walls that are privately owned, such as NIX, it's very likely that they'll have to do their own analysis because unless NIX provides that information, the city is unlikely to, to have it and to do that work.
Okay. Again, just thinking, I'm just, this whole, this whole concept really worries me about how this would work in practice, right? And how an engineer would rely on this information, again, if it's helpful at all, if, if this is even worth doing, if it's not helpful to a project. Going back to 1567 Beach Boulevard that did that work, they did two geotechnical reviews, they dug test pits, they analyzed all that, then it was peer reviewed by two other geotechnical engineers of the city. And this was in 2019, they determined that that wall had 40 years of life. And then two years later, GHD did the same analysis and they decided the wall had, I think, five to 20 years left. So, you know, what kind of information are, are we really gonna be able to give a developer that's helpful? And, you know, is this really useful? And what liability are we maybe taking if we're telling, saying that something has a life and then it doesn't? And they've based their design on that.
Oh, that was a question, I'm sorry. Yes, those are very great questions. I think at this point with the policies, the policy direction, staff is very confident that this policy direction is gonna allow for more development. It's gonna allow some properties that may not have much development potential now be able to develop with the concept of the SSRAs. You raised some really great questions. I think a lot of that work still needs to be done. And a lot of that work, we anticipate will be done during the implementation plan. I think I mentioned last time, the zoning ordinance is our implementation plan. The zoning ordinance has the requirements, if you are in a landslide area, this is what you need to provide to the city in order to demonstrate that you can safely develop. Very likely that is the same type of language of requirements that are gonna come out of adoption of a, of an LCLUP and be updated in the implementation plan. If you are in these areas, this is the type of analysis documentation that you need to provide to the city in order to demonstrate that your development is safe, that your development is addressing coastal hazards. I just had a conversation with coastal staff today where we briefly touched on that topic of how all of these different zones, coastal vulnerability zones, SSRAs, tsunami inundation zones, they're all gonna have different requirements of what staff is looking for. And all of that is gonna be in the implementation plan as we get into the level each zone, what types of, you know, requirements is the city gonna have on planning applications? What review level are we gonna do on planning applications? I understand that the council wants those, wants those questions answered, but it's, it's very difficult for staff to respond to those questions and give that detailed analysis when we have not confirmed the policy direction.
Yeah, my, my difficulty is if we're doing these SSRAs, we're committing to a process, a lot of staff time, a lot of money for the, the programs that are required after that. And, and we don't know if they're really helpful at this point. So, we can move on, I'm, I'm just, yeah.
I think I'd like to ask a follow-on question to that, just for the sake of clarity, between LCLUP and IP implementation plan. What is the relationship between the local coastal land use plan document and the implementation plan? My understanding so far is that LCLUP is a policy document, meaning that it's a higher level document that doesn't get into some of the specifics that the IP or implementation plan document will get into. If you could maybe flesh out my understanding of the relationship between those two documents, that might be helpful. Thank you.
Yes, so land use document is what we have in front of us today. It's policy direction. It essentially tells the city generally what the vision is for, for, in this case, the coastal zone. The implementation plan, it can be multiple documents. So the bulk of Pacifica's current implementation plan is the Pacifica Municipal Code and the zoning ordinance. Those are two documents that are our implementation plan. So when the city makes revisions to the Pacifica Municipal Code, depending on the section, we have to take that to California Coastal Commission to be certified. It's why we, we had to take our SDR ordinance to be certified, it's why we have to take our ADU ordinance to get certified by them. Because that, this Pacifica Municipal Code is part of our implementation plan. I mentioned the zoning map, that's another component of our implementation plan. But the city could also have other documents that are part of the implementation plan. So we can have certain programs, we can have policy documents that we would create, take to California Coastal Commission for certification and that they would become part of our implementation plan. And so really, when you're looking at the, at the Pacifica Municipal Code, that is what tells planners, that's what tells the public, I want to build a house on this site. I look at the map, the map says it's zoned R1. I look at the Pacifica Municipal Code, I look at the, what, R1 standards, that tells me what I can build. It tells me, do I need a site development permit? Do I need other permits because I want to do X, Y, and Z? Do I need other permits because I want to do X, Y, Z? That's, that's really the, when you're thinking of, I want to develop, you go to the Pacifica municipal code. Yes, you look at the general plan as well, but it, that is, that's the overarching policy direction. The, the code is really what's going to, what staff is going to be looking at to determine, do you meet all of these criteria, detailed criterias? Same thing with like subdivisions, we look at the subdivision map act. We look at the, the city's subdivision ordinance. There's, in general plan, there, yeah, there's policies that say, you know, we'll encourage subdivision under certain criteria. But when you're actually creating that subdivision, that concept for a planning application, or reviewing and approving that planning application, you're looking at the code.
So, and feel free to repeat anything you just said in answering this question. When you have the SSRA in policy form in the LCLUP, how does that translate into SSRA in IP?
Very likely, what will occur is we'll have to have some sort of overlay district in our zoning map. That then zoning map, you look at the zoning map, it says I'm in X, Y, Z zones. There'll be articles in the Pacifica municipal code that will say, if you are in this zone, this is what applies to you.
Thank you.
It's sort of like the hillside preservation overlay on top of the existing.
Exactly, that's a perfect example. So right now, you can look at the zoning ordinance, it might say R1, but then you'll see some dots that say you are in a hillside preservation ordinance, which means, or preservation district, which means then, yes, you look at the R1 requirements, but then you also have to look at the hillside preservation district requirements.
And what is the, the timeline of the IP? It seems like that would need to be in effect before these policies, so that you would tell people what they needed to do. And then, I mean, has the coastal commission, like they've given a timeline on other things, have they, have they said that?
No, they have not given us a deadline for implementing our implementation plan. The city, we, it's on our work plan to do a comprehensive code update, because we need to update our code to address the general plan changes as well that the council adopted in 2022. So it is on our, on our work plan to generally do a comprehensive update of the Pacifica municipal code.
But, but that would have to be done before these policies could come into effect?
Yes, and maybe the, the city attorney's office can assist with, with that. There is some language in the policy documents that say if there's any discrepancies, whatever is the certified documents will, will be the guiding.
Right, so I think the question was, when are we going to adopt zoning codes? The zoning code update?
Well, and, and the requirements that an applicant has to fulfill to, to use the SSRAs.
Those zoning code updates wouldn't take place until we have a certified LCLUP. So we would wait until we get that, and then we would process the zoning code updates.
Okay, but, well, even if the LCLUP is certified, there's still a period, because we have to provide these other plans, right?
The implementation plans, correct.
So, anyway, so I'm guessing, I mean, so the, but, no, not just the implementation plan, the mitigation plan.
The coastal management plan?
Yes, the coastal access and resilience program in particular, that's about the SSRAs. Right, so we have a few years to get that going and in place and submitted before these policies can go into effect, so, anyway.
Right, so it wouldn't, I mean, you could, you could adopt the zoning codes after the, the LCLUP is certified, but some of these programs won't be in place to take advantage of, like the implementation plan and the CAR, the coastal access resiliency plan. I can't remember exactly when that needs to go into effect, but that also needs to be worked on after.
Okay, and does, and does the implementation plan go to the planning commission, the council, and the coastal commission for approval also?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
More questions?
Can you pull that policy back up? I'm, sorry for the diversion.
Did you want to see CRI 19? That's the policy you wanted to see?
Did you say 19?
39, I may have misspoken.
Oh, that I had wanted to go back to? Is that, I'm sorry, I don't know what the question was. What was your question, sorry?
Oh, which policy did you want to see?
Oh, well, well, we just, we hadn't given any input on that one, because I diverted to the map. So did anybody have any questions on that one?
We're on CRI 40, right?
Yep.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I did have one more question on group 9, and this was in public letters, too. I'm midway through. Okay, yeah, so it says, in the SSRAs mapped, and the figures may rely on a shoreline protection structure in that area that is existing at the time of the permit application to help determine that its setbacks meet the requirements of policies. So, um, the, the question I've seen from the public, I, 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 is, is what protections, what potential protections can people count on when they're, I mean, is it just setbacks? Does that, and then, does that relate to erosion? Does that relate to flooding, other issues? What, what is meant by setbacks? Because that's all it says that these can help you with, is demonstrating that the setbacks meet the requirements. Does that make sense?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Bowles, which one are you addressing?
So I'm, I'm still on CRI 39, in the middle of the paragraph, where it's basically saying the, the, what the special shoreline resiliency areas can do is to help demonstrate that the, that its setbacks meet the requirements of these policies. So what is actually, what is, what does that give, what does that give an applicant? We talked before about the SSRAs maybe helping with erosion, and, and maybe, you know, I can see how erosion relates to a setback. But is that the only benefit, or are there other potential benefits? How, how is that defined?
Councilmember Bowles, the intent of the policy is to provide, to allow development to address all the coastal hazards. So I believe this might be a typo.
That's a pretty big typo.
Do you mean a no mission? I don't understand what you mean by a typo.
Because I think the policy is supposed to read, permit application to help demonstrate that it meets the requirements of policy CRI 19 and CRI 20.
Well, so if you look at CRI 20, it says, "Development in coastal vulnerability zones shall be cited in design and setback from the bluff top and/or shoreline to be saved from erosion." So that's consistent with CRI 39.
And, and CRI 39 is saying that the existing armoring, the existing protection can be factored into that calculation of safety from the, from the setback compliance, correct?
That's what I read.
Is, is this the exact language that the coastal commission approved, city attorney?
Yes, and as I recall, there was some discussion about setbacks to try to make the terms consistent. Setback, offset, there was some discussion about that, and they wanted the word, the term setback, as I recall.
So to me, what this is saying is, you know, if you've got your property, and we can look at 1567 Beach Boulevard, you know, so they, they had said that the setback needed to be 108 feet. So that's all that these policies could help you determine, is how far back your building goes.
I guess the question I would have from Ms. Cervantes is, so the, the difference being counting whether the protection is there or not. So that without the protection factored in, that distance, that setback is going to be much different than calculating with the protection there. That would be the intent of CRI 39, is that correct?
I think, in, in part, that's one of the requirements that the policy is intended to address. It's my understanding that we were, the policy was intended to address all coastal hazards as well, so that it would give allowances for stormwater, wave overtopping, things like that as well.
And the other related question I was trying to research, um, these are certainly Beach Boulevard. I haven't looked at Rockaway, are FEMA high hazard zones already now?
For flooding, you mean?
For flooding. And, 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 right, so they're, they're labeled, V, I think VZ, shoot, I have the map up, I can look. And so there, and, and right now, the FEMA maps don't include sea level rise, right? It's just flooding as it is. But already, these are the highest hazard zones. And FEMA also requires certain things when you build in those zones. And one of those is that you don't put living area below a certain datum point. Right, so there's, anyway, there's just lots of overlay that's going to restrict what's being built here.
Like, place your garage below your living area, so your bedrooms are not on the ground floor?
Right, but also hazards if the waves overtopping is hitting your building.
Right.
Right, so, anyway.
I'm trying to remember this, a question came up about this in relationship to insurance. Do you remember that? And what the insurers were looking at? And it was circling back to the FEMA.
Yeah, fire, insurers are looking for fire, is the, sorry, I don't mean to be glib about it. That, that was the short answer when it comes to flood insurance. My understanding is it does come through FEMA at this point.
Yeah, the article I read said you can't get regular insurance if you're in those zones, it would have to go through FEMA.
And my, my research indicated, generally speaking, it's commercial uses that are going to be going out for the insurance. But of course, if you live along Beach Boulevard, presumably you've been tapping the feds for your insurance also. But it's, it, right, at this time, the, the topic is more in terms of fire than it is in terms of flood.
That, exactly, you're reminding me now, that was the, because I think there have been some questions in the community about what is the impact of these policies on my ability to get insurance? And this came up when I was at Smart Coast. There was a legal panel that was specifically addressing insurance concerns and financing. And they stated, I mean, the, the current practice, state of the practice, is the only thing that they're looking at is the FEMA flood maps. They're not factoring these kinds of policies. I mean, it's a general question, forward-looking, makes sense to think about it. But as a practice, it's, it was just the FEMA requirements that were being incorporated, like you were saying.
I don't think the shoreline's in the FEMA program.
The flood insurance?
Flood insurance, yes.
Oh, I don't know, I, I can just show you the map, and that's, that's what it says when it's in that zone.
Okay, and FEMA flood insurance is, the problem with the flood insurance is that the, they let the program expire, and then they have to go in and redo it again. And sometimes it takes them weeks.
And then they run out of money.
Yeah, it takes them weeks to come back and say, okay, we're going to start this FEMA flood insurance project again. But meanwhile, people are sitting there with nothing.
That's what it was. My research, I think, was specifically in terms of how is insurance affected if there's armoring versus if there's not armoring? And I think the conclusion was essentially, if you're in a flood zone, you're in a flood zone, and at that point, it doesn't much matter.
Oh, so the armoring isn't impacting it? Isn't impacting the insurability or not?
It's a mapped flood zone. Whether or not it impacts homeowners' insurance in general, the, you know, physical possessions, that, I'm not sure. That would ride with a different kind of insurance. But in terms of flood insurance, if it's mapped as a flood zone, it's mapped as a flood zone.
And that's what they're factoring in, okay.
Okay, can, move on?
Yeah.
Move on?
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on.
Continuing with policy CRI 41. And this is on page, packet page 380 of the August 12 report, that's the summary table. So this policy determines when the SSRA policies go into effect. So as seen on the screen, this initial coastal access resiliency program needs to be developed and submitted for commission review. And in accordance with policy CRI 5, the development of the shoreline adaptation program has been initiated, including at minimum that the city has developed a public engagement plan, work plan, timeline, and identified funding for completion of the technical studies and planning work. And so just, I want to clarify that what this policy is saying is that the SSRA policies do not go into effect at time of certification of the document. They go into effect once both of these actions have been taken.
And then in relation to the questions we had a minute ago about the implementation plan?
Yes.
That doesn't start until, is, does that connected to these planned approvals as well?
The work on the implementation plan is not connected to this policy, but assuming that the document is certified, staff would begin work on updating the implementation plan.
That's covered in the next policy, right?
Yeah, so moving on to CRI 42. This policy contains language which would suspend the SSRA policies. So as you can see on the screen, there are criterias, information that the city needs to provide, actions that the city needs to take, and submit to California Coastal Commission. That would, if the city does not meet these obligations, would suspend the SSR, SSRA policies. So for the first one, it would be tied to the following policy, CRI 43. The coastal access and resiliency program is not certified by the commission within 15 months of acceptance of the LCP amendment for filing, as identified in policy CRI 41. Or any CDP application that are required every five years to be, to implement projects are not submitted in complete form. Or any projects required in the coastal access resiliency, resilience program are not developed and implemented. In addition, per the policy that we had spoken about a few weeks ago, CRI 5, the city is obligated to start that work. So if the city has not completed technical studies to accomplish part of the shoreline adaptation program within six years of effective certification of the land use amendment that created the requirement for the shoreline adaptation program, or the city has not prepared a draft shoreline adaptation program within eight years of effective certification of the LUPA that created the requirements of the shoreline adaptation program, or the coastal commission has not certified the final shoreline adaptation program within 10 years of effective certification of the LUPA that created the requirements of the shoreline adaptation program. So essentially, what this is saying is, for the shoreline adaptation program, the city has milestones. So those milestones are six years, eight years, and 10 years that we need to meet in order to keep the policies in place.
And can you tell me what the five-year, what the ref, what the reference to the five-year plans, CDP applications that are required every five years? What are we referring to there?
That is in reference to the coastal access and resiliency program. So there will be, some of those projects will require coastal development permits, either through the city permit jurisdiction or through the California coastal permit jurisdiction. Very likely, some of those will have a horizon where they will expire and the city will need to reapply.
Okay, so it's, when I first read it, it made it sound like everything. It was very inclusive, but I read it again, it says any of the CDP applications that require it. So that would be specific to the project?
Yes.
And then I wanted to ask about the third bullet point there in the top section. Any of the projects required in the coastal access and resilience program are not developed slash implemented. Does that mean completed in terms of construction?
Yes. So the first bullet point essentially is saying there's, or the second bullet point, apologies, is saying there are some projects that are going to require CDPs, probably from California Coastal Commission, that will have essentially an end date. You'll need to reapply every five years for some of these. If the California Coastal Commission gives you approval for these projects, but the city fails to actually develop them or implement them, that is also a cost for suspension of the policies.
So even if they're under construction, they're not implemented? With, with, if they're supposed to be finished within that period, maybe they have a little leeway, but.
Yeah, Councilmember Bowles, that's a good question. Later on in this policy, you'll see how it talks about the determination notice coastal needs to send to the city, and then the city can reply to that. And, you know, based on that exchange and communication and collaboration back and forth, clearly, we would expect that, oh, you know, well, this project is underway, it's been delayed for X, Y, and Z reasons, or, you know, that there would be reasonable explanations back to coastal commission, and, and the executive director would say, you know, agree to that, and it wouldn't be suspended.
Anyway, there's a lot of ways for them to stop doing this program, right? After we've spent a lot of time and money trying to do the program. So it seems to me.
Are you thinking we should put something more, that gives the city more opportunities for, I don't know?
I don't know, it just depends on how they're going to enforce it.
Negotiation, or?
Yeah.
Because it does read, like, pretty, like, you can, all these policies are suddenly not in effect anymore if this happens.
Right.
So it does, I hear what you're saying. Is there a way to indicate what you just said, Kevin, in a, in a clearer way, under bullet point blah, blah, three?
So I, like, may, Madam Mayor, so this CRI 42 had, we had extensive conversations with coastal commission staff and our legal team about these, this language, and there was back and forth a little bit on the dates. Of course, the coastal commission wanted certainty, they wanted a short timeline, and of course, the city wanted more flexibility in achieving the standards or the, the milestones that were set in this policy. So there already has been a significant discussion and back and forth with the coastal commission staff about these dates, timeline, and the language itself. So we've done a lot of work to get as much flexibility as we think was appropriate and achievable.
And part of, part of understanding this also is, is the, if you look at it from the perspective of the pressure that the coastal commission is under to feasibly approve and implement LCLUPS with cities up and down the state. So, so there's that, that aspect which, which would suggest that, you know, they're, they're going to be reasonable in their collaboration with cities to effectively implement these policies.
I just wonder if there's, I think we should put a little mark on this, because I, I'm concerned about that. Any, I don't know, program that are not developed slash implemented? Because that sounds final, as Christine just said. And it may be in process of being done, in which case, it should count.
Right, but as City Manager Woodhouse mentioned, at the bottom of the bullets, there's, it says, you know, in the event that the coastal commission's executive director determines that the city has not met one or more of the above conditions, they, they send a preliminary determination to the city explaining that one or more of the conditions set forth above have not been met, and that suspension of the policies shall occur after 15 working days unless the city submits written objection to the preliminary determination. And so there is this back and forth that's built in if the executive director determines that one of the conditions has not been met.
And, and our thought was that if it's implemented and in pro, you know, if it's adopted and then in process of implementation, even though it's not fully implemented, our thought was that we would be able to negotiate with the coastal commission to, to address that. And that, that was language that the coastal commission agreed to in response to our concerns about the milestones.
Mm-hmm. Again, I'll just, you know, piggyback on some of the comments from Mr. Woodhouse. Their coastal commission has put a lot of work into this policy, into this document, very likely similar work into other documents up and down the coast. We have put a lot of work into this document as well, and are going to be putting a lot of work into these implementation actions. It's very likely that there'll be some negotiation, some back and forth, so that these, we can continue to implement the policies. I don't think that with all that work that all the staffs have, has done, that it'll be an end date and then no further discussion from that. It's very likely that there'll be ongoing conversations between staff.
I think where a lot of this is coming from, from, just the sense that I've gotten from when I was at the commission meeting last week, and the general discussion, a lot of the public comment that was offered on the, for the item that we were there to discuss, the neighborhood approach. There is concern that the issue of the programs, the shoreline adaptation programs, that are kind of the offsetting for the, the armoring and continuing to allow and incorporate the armoring into the plan, that the concern is that we'll just make a plan and say, yeah, we're going to do that, and then we don't ever do it. And the armoring is there and, and being maintained. And, and so I think this was, as I'm reading these different bullet points, I'm thinking, this is their way of reassuring the part of the community that's unhappy about the idea of in any way counting armoring and not absolutely insisting that it all be removed, right? I mean, that, this is the flexibility of where the coastal commission is, and it's not staff, it's the commission as well. I mean, we always think staff is over here having these conversations, yeah, but what's the commission really going to say about it? And they were engaged in this conversation. It's an uncomfortable one for them, for everyone, because the charges, you know, I'm getting a little beyond our little policy here, but the, the overall scope of it is that this is a carve-out to the coastal act. This is the first step of undermining the strength of the coastal act as approved by the voters. And I think, you know, I certainly know the group I've been working with for a couple, few years now, the intent is not to undo the coastal act. The intent is to find a reasonable compromise between the, you know, maximum vision of restoring the coastline to, you know, an unbuilt state, which is not practical from a, you know, property issues, our infrastructure exists, the coast is built out in places. And so the compromise that is being talked about here, and it sounds a little, you know, intimidating in the way in which it translates in policy language, but the compromise is to allow armoring in some places where it is existing, and to have adaptation in other places that offsets. And the only way those adaptation projects get done is if they're, you know, on a schedule with a specific implementation plan, approvals, funding, and all of that. And that, and so I think the intent here was more to make sure it's not just lip service, like, oh, yeah, yeah, we're going to do an adaptation over there, you know, up at where that beach is or something. And, you know, it was very clearly stated a couple of times by Surf Rider, some of the representatives from Surf Rider. Yeah, and it can't just be a bench, and it's more than a trail, you know? And so it's this notion of how are we incorporating natural adaptation into our actions, not just into our
Right.
you know, general, oh, yeah, natural adaptation's a good idea, and then never doing it.
And if I could just add to that, just one point, that I, I, I agree with Vice Mayor's comments, and I would just add that another comment that we, you know, we received from the coastal commission, you know, AG's office, is that a lot of these changes, to your point about, you know, diverting from the language of the coastal act, a lot of these back and forth are due to their need and our need to make sure that all of these changes that we are making, especially with SSRAs, is consistent with the coastal act. So that the coastal commission, as well as we can say, this diversion, or exception, or whatever, you know, however you want to describe it, is still consistent with the coastal act. And that's what we're trying to balance. And that's what, you know, staff has been trying to do. We've been trying to balance the community's interests, the council's interests, you know, our interests, along with the need from the coastal commission to stay true to the coastal act. And to make sure that whatever we do adopt in terms of an LCLUP is defensible. And, and that's another aspect to your point.
And I think to your point too, Sue and I was listening in on that meeting too, and thank you for being there, and you, you really made some good comments. And Tiger too, I saw you too. It'll be, it's going to be interesting to see what the commissioners themselves say, because, right, this has all been going through with staff. And what I really heard come out of that is that, you know, when they're talking about neighborhood-based planning, it's, it's a larger area, and they were really concerned about the word neighborhood.
Yes.
Because that meant built environment, right? And they're looking at more geologic neighborhoods, right? Like, section of coast, and, and how the erosion and the beaches and, you know? And I heard from several commissioners that their goal of these neighborhood-based, regional-based, I forget what the word is.
Area, district. They were throwing out all kinds of names.
They threw out a bunch of names. Is really to be able to look at nature-based solutions.
That's right.
Because you're looking at a broader scale.
That's right.
And so, you know, yeah, if, if, and, and this is very different, and there were a lot of critical, critical comments about, about what we're doing here right now with these policies, because they really are about keeping armoring and even expanding armoring in these areas. But I think the point is, you know, yeah, we're not going to be able to do benches, like, where can we remove seawalls, and where can we do nature-based solutions? And so it, it, it is going to be a, I mean, this is where we need a vision for the whole coast, like you say, but if we're committing to this, we have to know that we're committing to something else somewhere else.
Yep.
And, and, and there might be some losers in town, right? Because these policies aren't necessarily fair. And we've heard that from the community earlier.
Well, I think the thing that we have to, I was thinking specifically in a neighborhood to the south of where we're sitting right now, that we have in place in many instances, there already are nature-based solutions in form of buffer zones. And, and so it's very interesting to hear one of the commissioners, when Justin Cummings came and looked at it, he's like, yeah, like that, you know, pointing to the dunes and the amount of green space. And so what I want to figure out, as we develop these projects, is incorporating that which is already existing. How are we maintaining it? How are we improving it? How are we making it more something that we can rely on? Is there a need for some level of drainage or some, something that needs improving upon? We don't need to reinvent, you know, a dune there, there already is one. There's already a planted area that we would be, I think, committing to keeping it that way. And then if there's minimal work that needs to be done to enhance that, but it's where we don't have those kinds of things that we're going to be looking at projects.
What are we doing in there, right?
Exactly. So I think that in, in this sense, I think it is a good compromise, because otherwise, we have these, these policies that are across the board, exactly the same for everyone, and it doesn't reflect the conditions on the ground. So I think the real, you know, the rub is going to be how, what is the impact of the armoring? And what is the corresponding offsetting, sort of, mitigation isn't really the right word, but up, offsetting balance in, in a nature-based type of approach.
To actually make sure we have beaches in other places, right?
Exactly.
Because they're going to go away in these areas.
And in, and where, in, in areas where you don't have a beach, or you're not going to have a beach, or there's a rocky outcropping or something, what other kinds of access are we able to implement? Because it's not only, you know, your feet on the sand. In some cases, there's going to be other kinds of, of coastal access points that we want to implement. So I think it's really going to take that analysis of our whole coastline
Yeah.
and looking at that, and agreeing on what these different segments look like. We tried that once in 2017, it didn't go real well, so I'm hoping the next round is a little bit more balanced and inclusive, and gives all of the community an opportunity to ask questions and have input into that. One thing that I will just say, as we keep saying nature-based, nature-based, you know, in the local government working group, we were talking about what is nature-based as in natural, and what is nature-based in somewhat engineered but using natural systems? And so there, you know, such as artificial reefs, such as these kinds of implementations that are, you know, it's not, not every project, especially in Pacifica, is going to be able to be what we did at Lindemar Beach. Because the terrain and the setup and the, it's just, you know, it's not that, but that doesn't mean it's not something. We have to work as a community to figure out what that is, is the way I see it.
I think one can help the other. I mean, if, if we had artificial reefs outside and our seawall, I think it would bring, it would save our seawall longer, and also just provide less need for sand nourishment.
Right.
So I think that's, you know, we, we can combine them together.
I know, and I think we're
If we can come up with $250 million for this one area.
That's the trick, is funding.
Well, I didn't talk about the money part.
Hey, you know, and that, the artificial reef document, that I don't know how widely spread it is publicly, and it should be widely spread publicly, if it hasn't been yet. But I think that the authors of that, their premise being that many of them are Army Corps of Engineer folk, is that it needs to be run through Army Corps of Engineers to figure out what viability looks like. And at the point in which the Army Corps is able to ascertain viability, that's when we might be able to tap the Fed for those dollars that clearly we do not have in our back pocket this week. And so looking at long periods of time and a great deal of money, I think that it becomes more conceivable as we look at it in terms of steps and process, and what it looks like to get from here to there, and who our partners are along the path. And for that matter, to make sure we are forming relationships And for that matter, to make sure we are forming relationships with those whom would be our partners. As I was hearing the initial conversation around CRI 42, some of my initial thoughts are different than those that we heard last Thursday at Coastal. And I had more interest in protecting what seems like a workable approach, but what if it's a different executive director, and after all, we have a relationship with this one?
I know. I've thought that too.
Or when it's different coastal staff, and we have relationships with these ones, or different coastal commissioners, and heaven knows, we actually have relationships with some of them at this point. And I think a part of the answer to that is, well, if we keep showing up, we keep forming relationships. And it, it's up to us to demonstrate that form of leadership, where a part of leadership really is just showing up, saying hi. And there's a lot more to it than that, but sometimes it really is that simple. And beginning by saying, hey, we're human beings, and we can continue this conversation. And then after that, SB 272 and the 2034 deadline, and, and I only bring that up because there was this question that, I forget the gentleman's name who was facilitating the whole thing.
Kaylin, Kaylin McGee?
Yeah. And one of his questions, I think his last question, was essentially, what's the nature of the document? And as I'm looking at this, I'm like, well, the nature of the document is it has to be a living document.
Right.
If we're updating ourselves once every half a century, there's something that we are missing in that process, whereas if we're looking at this as an organic document that's growing with our needs, and growing with whatever the needs of climate change wind up being, you know, at the least, we have new science every five years. So.
Yeah.
It seems like there's a lot built into it whereby, much as an artificial reef that can grow, our document likewise could grow.
It's going to happen.
If we have a document.
I know.
Right.
I mean, that's the real issue. What can we have?
Okay, are we done with 42?
Will never be done, Sue. Will never be done.
Are we finished for the moment?
For tonight, are we done? I feel like I am.
Okay.
All right, moving on to CRI 43. So this policy is the end dates of the SSRA policies. So as stated here, as of January 1st, 2045, no new development may rely on the SSRA policies unless the commission certifies an LCP amendment to extend this deadline. So as of January 1st of 2045, development approved based on the SSRA policies that relied on the shoreline protection structures to demonstrate safety, stability, and adequate setbacks shall become legal nonconforming, and moving forward, the structural modification triggers will apply to the development in accordance with, with those policies.
I have to say, I have a little problem with this one. When I first read this, I went, what? Because for me, we're talking 20 years, right? I mean, as we looked at the length of the life of a existing, I mean, the useful life of a structure, it, this feels a little short to me. And I was trying to understand, I mean, I think it probably goes to what Assistant City Attorney was describing in the back and forths, and working with the AG's office and all of that. They're trying to put a pin in it, trying to put an outer boundary to it. But for my purposes, I have to give you the feedback that I think this is too short. It doesn't, in, in light of how long we've been working on this process, it feels like, it just feels artificially short to me. And so I wanted to bring that forward to all of you and see how you reacted to it.
And I'll add, just by way of background, I specifically pushed back hard on this, and suggested at least a 30-year period, but they're, they're not, they're, they're dug in on the 20-year period for this.
Yes, Councilmember Beckman, just to, to add to that, I think the goal of Coastal Staff is that by 2045, the city will have updated our adaptation program, we've updated mapping, there might be new science available. And so at that point, the city might be ready to do a new LCP, or we may be able to do some changes to this LCP that will allow them to grant us an extension to this deadline. So I think really it's, Mr. Woodhouse is correct, that they really wanna, they want to put an end date, but I think it's really to pressure us as well to continue to evolve this document, and to continue to improve planning in the coastal zone.
Well, I think we're gonna have to work on this piece, I'm sorry to tell you. I think we're gonna have to come up with something other than, where did I read it?
Amendment.
Something about.
Later as specified in.
Development approved based on these policies that relied on shoreline protection structures, blah, 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 shall become legally nonconforming, and moving forward, a substantial structural modification to such development. So am I reading this right, that everything, like, reverts to an SSM or something? I, I need to understand, like.
Well, the SSM supply anyway, but.
I feel like it's like Cinderella, you know? You're at the ball, it's all great, everything's good, and then midnight comes around, or 2045, and then poof, you don't have that anymore. And it just feels a little abrupt. So I understand, from what you're telling me, that you pushed back hard on this, and they pushed back hard on, you're pushing back hard, but you can see why. It's a concern for me, and perhaps others.
Yeah, so I can expand on that. So it's, it's a little bit of how you described, so yes, as stated here, starting January 1st, 2020, 2045, there will be a shift. So essentially, what that second sentence is saying is, starting from that day, development that took advantage of the SSR policies designed to those policies, it will become legal nonconforming, because the policies will not exist any longer. Additionally, it's saying if that development, after January 1st, 2045, does a project that is considered a structural, a substantial structure modification, they will need to comply with all the policies that are required of substantial structural modifications. And they list the policies there. So it's not saying that you are automatically a substantial structural modification, it's saying development starting from that point will need, that is a substantial structural modification, will need to start complying with all those policies. And so as you may recall, those policies require the technical reporting, the citing and design, et cetera, for, for projects.
And it will be without the ability to incorporate the armoring that, for the 20-year period, assuming we got this done in 2005, right? Am I reading that correctly? It's basically a 20-year timeline.
Right.
Right, unless, unless a, an LCP amendment changes that in that time, depending on what happens, you know, in, in the intervening time, and any sort of update.
So do you feel like this is the hook to get you to update your LCP more than every 42 years and counting? I'm wondering, seriously.
Or 44.
Well, this isn't, this isn't saying, well, I mean, this would be a benefit, but there's other benefits to having your LCLUP be a living document.
Yes, I understand.
And updating it more frequently than every 40 years.
I do that.
You, you don't want to have any planning land use document, whether it be your general plan, housing element, or, you know, clearly your LCLUP to last more than 20 years. I mean, you, you do want, we will be review, we should be reviewing the LCLUP again before 20 years.
Right.
Who says that they're going to accept our amendment in 20 years? When I first looked at it, I thought, oh, that's forever, and then I realized it isn't. Tells you how old I'm getting.
Hardly time to get your permit in some cases.
I mean, it, it's such a short time, and, and do they actually have, they wouldn't have to take our amendment. They could just say, too bad.
It's over.
It's over, you're done. The dance is over.
Honestly, the, the way that we're going, and the, how much pushback we're getting, and the back and forth and back and forth, the Coastal Commission, we might not even have one to send into the Coastal Commission by then.
Oh, Mary.
So maybe we should, you know, take public comment at some point.
Oh, yeah. You're right, sorry.
I do have some comments on this one, though.
Forgot we didn't do that.
Before we.
Sorry. Not that we're deliberating, sorry.
Well, I mean, no, that's true. I can, most, I, I was gonna say, I do, I do see them, I mean, 20 years gives them a chance to see how we're doing, if we're really doing what we said we would do. I mean, obviously, they can pull it before that, but also, again, like Beach Boulevard, it's already a very hazardous zone, the highest hazard FEMA defines, and that's just gonna get worse, right? So at some point, it may not make sense. And, and I, and so I think, I mean, they're, they're giving themselves a way out, because the conditions will change. But I'm, you know, working for developers, this policy would worry me to death, to where I would not want to use these policies to design my building. Because, again, so you've, let's just say, a hotel on the site has designed to rely on the seawall, even the new seawall, that's only lasting 50 years, the hotel has to design longer. But, okay, so the policies expire, all of a sudden, you're legal nonconforming. Well, and, but then you want to do a, a major remodel. Well, oh, but we only designed our foundations to rely on that seawall, and now we can't anymore, because it's legal nonconforming, so we may have to do major structural work to this building, because we haven't designed it to, to really resist the hazards that are there without that seawall. So if I was that developer, I would never even want to use these policies, I would design it to what I know it would need to, to stay there.
Um, was, do you recall in, oh, maybe we should do public comment, I can make a note, and we can come back to this if you want.
Well, there's, I think, well, we, we still have to get to the access and resiliency and the, and the general plan comments, which are nowhere in the record, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of comments.
I mean, I don't know.
I was just gonna add quick, by way of analogy, I mean, to, to Councilmember Bull's point, you know, every, every development is built to today's codes, and then when codes change, become legally nonconforming. So in the future, like, the size of the, you know, joists you use on your deck, and you need to upgrade that 10 years later, you're gonna have new requirements to comply with for safety. So that's always, that environment is always changing.
The, the basic structural stuff doesn't change, some of the attachments and, you know, other things change.
Well, what we talked about last, when we were talking about the S yards, the one-car garage.
Yeah.
That they built all those houses, that it was conforming at the time.
Right.
It's currently not. That's a major structural item.
Right.
So.
Yeah. But also, I want to ask what happens if there's a project that's in the middle of getting their permits, that was relying on these policies, and suddenly they expire?
Mm-hmm. Right, because I'm looking at it like 20 years from now, but.
You know how long it takes to get a.
You don't even start, right? Exactly.
To the Coastal Commission.
So now it's not really, now it's 15 years. I think we're gonna have to, I think you're gonna have to help us figure out a way to let, put this on the, we have to discuss this more list, or the council's very concerned about this list, or something. Because I'm, even as I look at this, I'm thinking, how does this comport with the projections of sea level rise that we're looking at in OPC guidance? In 20 years' time? It's, there's not a lot predicted to be impacting us in 20 years, and this is turning off the valve in 20 years. That's a little bit out of alignment. I realize we're not gonna solve this right this second, but.
Yeah, and sea level rise isn't that much, but the storms are increasing, and that's where we're seeing a lot of damage.
That's a good point. Yeah. Okay.
All right, moving on to the last policy here, CRI 44, this is the Coastal Access and Resilience Program. So this is the, the program that is directly tied to the SSRA policies. And the staff has previously described it as the CIP work plan for the coastal zone. So the city is able to use projects that would already be built. In the short term, we have the ability to use some of the projects that the city's already expecting to implement in our current CIP. And so these projects shall be organized in terms expected of implementation dates within five-year increments. So really what they're asking us to do is, on a five-year basis, update that, that list. And the types of projects that Coastal is looking for is enhancement to a public recreational access facilities, removal of existing armoring, nature-based adaptation, beach nourishment, and acquisition conservation of property subject to coastal hazards. So all of these projects, these projects are not just to be implemented in the SSRAs, these projects are meant to be along the entire coastline. And so this is part two of this policy, so as I previously said, in the short term, the city can use some of our current projects on our CIP, so you'll see that on bullet point three. We can use the Rockaway to Pacifica State Beach Trail Rehab Project, the Rockaway Beach Parking Structure, Rockaway Parking Area, the Beach Boulevard Promenade Park Improvements, the Sharp Park Priority Development Area, so that would be the PDA Access Pedestrian Improvement Project. So these are projects that currently are on our CIP list.
Wait, what, the Rockaway Beach Parking Structure isn't on a CIP list, is it?
It's not in existence. They have a fund for it.
Oh, they do?
Yeah.
It has $20,000.
It's, it's an unfunded project in the CIP, and that's what the parking in Lou fees are for, to eventually save up enough money to build a parking structure there.
Yes, as, as I previously stated, the project shall be designed to be implemented in five-year increments. And the city also has to identify the funding mechanisms for these projects. So what we submit to Coastal will, will need to be thoroughly planned out, will need to demonstrate how, not only are we gonna design and permit these projects, but also how we're gonna construct them as well. And then, as stated in the last paragraph, the initial program shall be developed and should be submitted as an amendment to the LCP by three years from date of LCP update certification. By five years from the date of the Coastal Commission approval of the initial coastal access program, coastal access and resilience program, and every subsequent five years, the city shall submit a complete CDP application to the Coastal Commission, or where applicable to the city itself, shall approve projects via CIP. So this goes back to the previous policy with the CD, that mentioned the CDPs every five years. And the program shall be monitored, evaluated, updated, and resubmitted as an amendment to the LCP at least every 10 years thereafter.
Have, have they indicated how many projects? I mean, I, I know some projects can be small, like the dog poo mitts.
I know, right?
Why is that even there?
I know, right?
It's not a mitigation for beach loss, but.
No, lady.
Doggy mitts.
I thought you only hit those in the snow.
But, seriously, like, what are they really expecting to see in a five-year period?
Yes, I think in general, they're expecting to see the city working towards improving, adding coastal access in the form of direct access to beach areas, but also more access to coastal views, so perhaps improvements on some of the bluffs. They have not specified we need X number of projects, or anything like that. I think in, as long as the city is making efforts towards planning these projects and implementing them, as stated in, in this policy, we, we have to identify the timelines and the benchmarks and the funding, how the city's gonna be implementing these. I think that's really what they want to see, they want to see work going towards this. And in conversations that we've had with them, they, they completely understand that probably in the medium to short term, some of the projects that are, they're gonna, we're gonna need to put on, in this plan, are gonna be shorter-term projects. However, we, the city can start planning for removal of shoreline protection, or, yes, of existing shoreline protection in some areas, we can start planning for how the city will acquire and maintain other areas of the coastline as well. And so that's really what they want to see, they, they do want to see the medium, the short to long-term plan for how the city will be addressing coastal access, but really what they want to know is, what are we gonna do for the first five years? What are we gonna do for the next five years? And they completely understand that funding, planning, it takes time, so that it's very unlikely that the city will say in five or 10 years, we're gonna be able to buy, you know, X number of acres. They, they completely are aware of that. But really, a plan towards that goal is what they want to see.
I see.
But, but at some point, we have to start doing those more major things, buying property... property, doing beach nourishment, doing nature-based solutions to be able to keep this, right? It's, maybe, maybe they give us a break the first five years, or maybe even ten, but we have some major projects we're committing to, is my impression, through doing these SSR As. And, and the other thing that's, sorry, I just wanted to clarify, that's not, it's not mentioned here, but this, this whole program and these policies and this work is only because of the SSR As, right? This would not be here if we were not doing the SSR As.
Correct, this policy is tied directly to the SSR As, so if the city were to decide not to adopt those, this, um, requirement would go away. Um, however, as we had mentioned, um, in this policy, oh, I'm sorry, in this policy for the effective dates, um, we mentioned policy CRI five, the development of the shoreline adaptation program, that is a requirement regardless of the SSR As.
Right, right, okay, good. Um. So, oh wait, sorry, um, there was one that said, enhance public pathway system, C word of private development in the Rockaway Beach area. Um, all I can think is that, like, maybe you can describe to me what that means, but my guess is that that's across Nix parking lot.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, that's correct.
So, this would require some kind of taking of part of private property?
Yes. Uh, not necessarily a, a taking, but working with.
An easement, or?
Yes, working with the property owner to create an easement.
I mean, there's no room there right now, unless you're losing parking, but.
Which area, I'm sorry?
Nix.
Oh, at the, the very top of the screen here. Oh, and then, um, sorry, formation, GHAD CSA, so GHAD is geologic hazard abatement districts, I believe, so, looking at, so say if you're, if you're looking at all of this area, Beach Boulevard, so maybe creating a district so that those people who live or have owned property there would help pay for these mitigations, even if they're not using the SSR A policies?
Correct, that's the idea.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, that's just one of the methods that's been identified for funding mechanism.
Okay, and, and then what's a CSA?
City service area.
Sorry?
A city service area.
That's the same kind of idea, or, like, if you're on sewer or something together, what, what does that mean?
I'm not sure what that means, I would defer to Mr. Ventas.
Yeah, I think that's a community services area, which is like a, a, a assessment district.
Okay. All right, so just so the community knows, there may be costs, if you live in these areas, to be able to have these policies.
Well, I think that's gonna be great news to some members of the community, because there's been a call for that.
Right, if you're benefiting from it, you should have a share in the cost.
I mean, all of these funding, uh, you know, mechanisms that they list here are funding mechanisms cities need to consider to fund their capital improvement programs anyways. If we're gonna do infrastructure projects, whether it's in the coastal area, other where in the city, we have to consider all of these types of, or various versions of these types of funding mechanisms to be able to fund those projects.
Okay.
Just wanted to make that clear, yeah.
So, are we ready to go to public comment?
Uh, yes, this does conclude, um, the council's first review of all the modifications.
But, but there's a bunch of coastal commission changes to the general plan.
Ton of them.
That, nobody knows anything about, if they want to comment on it.
So, shall we hear about those before we?
Do we want to talk about those first?
Yeah.
Yes, I can do.
I think we should.
I think we should too, because there's so many of them.
Okay, we're gonna talk about those first.
Yeah, so, um, per the coastal, uh, commission letter that we received in August, um, there was a number of general plan consistency changes that they requested. Um, these were, um, changes, so as you may recall, the council adopted general plan consistency changes, they, that were added into the LCP in October of last year, um, and this text is changes to that specific language. So, in many of the instances, the city, um, either clarified or reverted back to the original 2020 LCP language. Um, there are some instances where it's new language, however, the, um, the intent of the policy is unchanged. Um, so as you can see in, and I use the numbering per the coastal letter to keep it, uh, simple, um, so, um, item, uh, one A, um, they wanted clarification, this is language that refers to, um, if the city were to annex, um, land that's in our sphere of influence, the city, um, has identified that, that those areas would be, um, would have a land use designation of urban reserve, um, and they were really questioning of how the city was doing this, if this, these areas were outside of our boundary and within our, our sphere of influence. And so, um, we clarified with them that this would occur only in a future action if the city were to annex any property. Um, and so what we added was, in that first line, we just added, um, annex into the city of Pacifica, we added "in a future action," um, and that was, um, sufficient to address their concern.
And, sorry, I, what, what are we considering annexing that's in the coastal zone? I, I know things that are not in the coastal zone, but.
So, south of San Pedro neighborhood, we do have land that is within the coastal zone, that is within the sphere of influence for the city of Pacifica.
Shall we?
So that would include portions of the Pedro Point headlands. Um, so it's, it, this language doesn't necessarily say that the city will annex those, that land, it just gives some guidance, um, if the city were in a future action to annex that, that land.
And I think part of Shamrock is in the coastal zone.
Is it?
And that's like, that's larger than fifty acres. But, most of it's on the other, most of it's in the county.
Yeah, it'd be great if you could bring us some out sometime, maybe.
To, to answer your question, we're not considering annexation of anything right now, so this is just in the future if that were to happen, that's what this is about.
As your friendly LAFCO representative on the dais.
Yes.
Um, I think that it's pertinent to consider sphere of influence ramifications, but the city ain't looking to annex anything this week. And, um, it seems like of those lands that have been in, uh, conversation around the topic of annexation, it's certainly not lands in the coastal zone that have been discussed recently.
But, but I do want to know about Shamrock, because, yeah, because if you know, some of that is in the coastal zone.
It's good information to have, we should definitely have it in front of us, all I'm saying is that I don't think we're, there's any immediate.
Well, I just know the property's been up for sale, so things might change, right?
Anything could happen.
Mayor Vadoles, um, it's my understanding that Shamrock is east of Coast Highway, correct? All of it?
There's not a segment that goes on the other side? Because of?
Oh, under the bridge.
Microphone. Thank you.
Because of when they built the, um, tunnel?
You are correct, there's a portion that goes underneath the tunnel, that is west of Coast Highway.
It, it's a small portion.
Not fifty acres.
Well, the whole, but if you're considering the whole size of the whole entire thing, I think it's eighty.
Yeah.
Hey, but for development purposes on that site, which I think is, isn't it entirely agriculture, or all ag, except for that one little spot?
Yeah, two different zonings in that property.
So the part that's not agriculture is clearly not in the coastal zone, and the part that is in the coastal zone, I think, would be regarded as agriculture, which means there's not gonna be any development on that side if it were to be annexed, which there's no reason to annex it, because there's no, um, city facilities that, or, um, services we would need to provide for that piece of land.
Thank you for the clarification.
All right, thank you. Um, so for, um, one B here, um, the city at, at one point removed, um, so the policy used to recontinue to require bicycle parking facilities in, uh, new, uh, high-density residential mixed-use and non-residential development, as shown here. At some point, um, it, the high-density residential and mixed-use was removed from this policy, as was shown in the general plan consistency changes. Coastal staff requested that we, um, put high-density residential and mixed-use back into this policy, and staff agrees that we should continue to require bicycle parking, um, facilities from these multiple types of development. For one C, um, uh, for the general plan, the city had removed, um, the phrase, it's the second to last line here, um, that says enhances access to the coast, that had been removed for, um, for the general plan. Coastal staff requested that we insert that language back, and staff agrees. For one D, um, the city had rewritten this policy for the general plan, um, so that it read that the work, work with SAM Trans to facilitate transit-oriented development to all or part of the Lindemar Boulevard Park and Ride Lot. Um, that revision for the general plan, um, it's my understanding that the city only has the Lindemar Park and Ride Lot that, um, is managed by SAM's Trans, and so the policy used to say, citywide, encourage SAM Trans to, um, facilitate transit-oriented development, so it didn't really make sense to require them to do something citywide when they only have one lot that they have control of. So, the, the city did rewrite this policy for the general plan, um, and we inserted it here, however, um, to address any concerns with any potential futures, um, right, and park and ride lots, we added the last portion there, um, that says, and on any future park and ride lots that may be developed by SAM's Trans. City clerks? Thank you. For one E, um, this relates to transportation demand management measures, um, coastal staff requested that it be rewritten to make it easier, um, to read, so the intent of the policy is the same, however, it's been rewritten to, uh, make it more reader-friendly and easier to implement. Um, so that, this is, um, a rewritten policy, but the intent remains the same. For one F. One second, I need to look at my notes for this one. Um, yes, so for the, um, general plan, the city had, uh, removed the, um, language from this policy that says distribute parking, um, areas throughout the coastal zone, and coastal staff requested that we insert that language back, and staff agrees. For one G, um, for the general plan, um, the city had removed the term suitable, and that this policy, uh, read, allow sediment removed from, um, continuing the policy, and so coastal staff wanted us to reinsert the term suitable, to ensure that the soil sediment that was removed, um, meets a certain standard. Uh, for one H, the, um, city had rewritten this policy, um, for the general plan, uh, as was originally written in the LCP, the, this first bullet point could be, um, read to, could be interpreted to say, um, could be interpreted as the city would discourage development, um, on, like, city-owned parcels, when the policy is really intended to discourage development, um, and build out in critical habitat species for private development. So, the, this portion of the policy was rewritten to read, the city should discourage development and/or build out in critical habitat, area, habitat of special species status during the development review process, except where allowed by policy ER 124, and we'll be discussing that policy further as well. For one L. I'm sorry, one I. Coastal staff, um, had some concerns with the terminology and the changes between some of our figures and policies and some of our, uh, background, um, language in the LCP. Um, and so, in order to address those inconsistencies, staff has added a definition to the LCP, so we do have a new definition, um, for coastal view corridors and view sheds, um, which reads an area that is identified as significant for providing public visual and access to and along the coast, including but not limited to the mapped, um, limited to as mapped in FER 4.4. Um, so this was intended to be, um, to have some clarification of what a coastal view corridor and view shed is, without having to go through the entire document to make the, this terminology's consistent. Um, for one J, uh, this was, uh, an arrow done, um, by staff, um, coastal commission had originally recommended that we delete two paragraphs, um, at the end of chap, or, I'm sorry, in chapter five. Um, the redlined version that you saw in August 12, only deleted one of those paragraphs, staff, um, had previously agreed and continues to agree that both of those paragraphs needed to be deleted.
So, I'm sorry, is the language that's here what's being deleted?
No, that's, that's for one K. So, one K, um, was some questions regarding the replacement of definitions for easement and for special status. Um, so as you may recall, uh, the general plan essentially recreated both of these definitions for, uh, for easement and for special status species. Uh, we've worked, um, on this language with coastal staff, and these are the, the new pol, the new definitions for easement, um, and for specials, uh, special status species that are in the LCP. So, I'll, I'll read these, so, for easement, um, the new definition is a property right given by the owner of the land to the public or another party for specific limited use of the land. And easement may be acquired by a government or another party through dedication when the purchase of an entire interest in the property may be too expensive or unnecessary, usually needed for utilities or shared parking. And then for, um, specials, uh, special status species, uh, we did work, um, with coastal staff on this one to ensure that it's addressing all of the requirements of the coastal act. So, um, the definition, um, now reads, any species which is listed or proposed for listing as threatened or endangered by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, National Marine Fisheries Service, or California Department of Fish and Wildlife, under the provisions of the State and Federal Endangered Species Act. It also includes any species designated by U.S., USFWH, um, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service as a candidate, or species of concern, species designated by CDFW as a species of special concern, species that may be considered rare or endangered pursuant to section 15380B of the SECA guidelines, or species identified on California's Native Plant Society's List 1A, 1B, or 2, implying potential danger of extension, of extension. So, um, again, especially on the special status species definition, we worked really closely with coastal staff to ensure that not only is it very protective of special status species, but it is also consistent with the coastal act. And that is the last of the, um, general plan consistency changes, um, that are different from the, from the August 12 report to, to the version now.
Um, I want to go back to the issue of easement, because I'm still a little fuzzy on that, and the last paragraph in our, in the coastal commission letter on this point, um, talks about, something about removing this definition entirely and holding the discussion for the implementation plan. I'm looking at packet page 281.
Uh, yeah, so that was an option that coastal staff, um, gave us, was just simply removing the definition of easement, we thought it would be, um, better to. We thought it would be better to come to a solution and continue to have the definition in the document.
And so, the, so was there a need to redefine it in some kind of way, then? I'm still a little unclear why, what their objection was.
Yes, I think there was concern that the previous definition may not be applicable to property interest, that it might only be applicable for, like, rights of use. And so the, the, the changes that were made were to ensure that the definition of easement also includes property interest.
I think that's what concerns me. I need to understand that a little bit better. So maybe not right this second, but if you could point me to the actual definition so I could look at it, or we could bring it up on the screen or something.
Yes, and the city attorney may be able to assist me, but essentially, there's, there's different types of easements that can be recorded on a property. So there is property interest easements, that's usually like alleyways, or there's also use easements that can be given. So a very good example would be something like, if two property, two single-family homes share a driveway, they're, one or the other may not own the actual real estate, but they have the right to use that space.
And so, with regard to easement in our general plan, clearly, the Coastal Commission staff had a concern about it as relates to the coastal zone. And I'm wondering, is there a substantial change, or in some way, the redefining of the term? And what is that implication for property ownership in the coastal zone?
Mayor Protam, I don't think they had a concern, they just wanted to know why the definition had changed between the, and staff's explanation was, well, the general plan defines it a certain way, and so we're updating our LCLUP to be consistent with that definition.
And so they were concerned that it might have some implication for access?
My understanding is they just wanted to know what the rationale was for the change.
But ultimately, their issue, yes, all of these issues related to general plan consistency, when they were pushing back on us and we had our meeting with them, according to the AG's office, they're all required for Coastal Act consistency. So that was the back and forth that we went through with them to try to come up with a compromise if, for whatever reason, we disagreed with their interpretation. And, and on this one, we did not see an issue with using that definition of easement.
Okay.
Okay. Can I just ask, is there a separate definition of a prescriptive easement?
That's a legal term.
Right. I'm just, I'm just concerned because easement is in both, and, and obviously, that is not necessarily the property right given.
There, there is a definition for prescriptive rights in the document.
I'll look at that separately.
I'd like to have a copy of what those two definitions are, because they're not reflected here, and I'm, I just, I'm concerned about that. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, as I said, that was the last of the general plan consisting changes per the letter that was received on early August.
But then there's other policies, the San Pedro site, the Esha and Creek buffers.
Yes, I can, I'm ready to discuss those, but it was my understanding that the council wanted to go to public comment after this.
That's important for public comment, too.
Yeah, I thought we were going to go over.
All of that, yeah.
Okay.
Weren't we?
Yes.
Yep.
Sorry, public, be patient. I want to give you all the information.
Not yet.
Okay.
We'll wait till right before public comments.
Okay.
Yeah, so this policy, per the August 12 report, can be, be found on packet page 339 and on 437 for the red line. So as you may recall, the March 2023 coastal staff's suggested modifications removed three to five units per, per gross acre, and instead added a low-density range. When we had discussed this specific suggested modification with coastal staff, there was a misunderstanding of the land use designations. And so both staffs agree that the density range should be three to five units per gross acre. The only change to this policy from all the different changes is that we've added, to that last, to that sentence, we, we've added gross developable acre, and we've added a definition for gross developable acre to the document, and I, I can read that definition as well. So the definition for gross acre, gross developable, comes directly from the general plan, and it's an area of the site including proposed public streets or other proposed rights of way, but excluding areas subject to physical or environmental constraints, which include creek corridors and floodways and areas to be dedicated for greenways or habitat protections. So as stated in, in the coastal letter from, from early August, they had some concerns regarding the density and the potential development of the site and how it might impact resources on the site. And so we have a general plan definition that says gross developable acre means that it excludes physical and environmental constraints, and so we thought this was an easy way to address it, using terminology that the city already has in our general plan, and coastal staff agreed.
So, so when you're putting all this together, this is a new definition that's not in our book, that we don't have in writing, right? But when, this, this will come back at some point, and we'll have all the writing that we can look at.
Now, for, for these general plan consistency changes that we've confirmed with coastal, the intent is that we are going over them tonight, and they will become part of the record for the resolution that the council considers for adoption tonight.
Okay. I want to hear your definition again. I'd, I'd really like to see it, actually. I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm having trouble following you and hearing you, and this is too important to get wrong.
Yeah, so it is on packet page.
Maybe bring the microphone a little closer?
That would help, too.
The definition is included in tonight's, and, the definition is included in the LCP version that was attached to tonight's.
Wait a minute. So there have been changes in that that weren't highlighted at all?
So as we stated in, in the report, the LCP that was attached to tonight's agenda was a clean version, and staff would be highlighting the modifications at, at the hearing tonight.
I'm going to tell you right now, I'm not going to feel comfortable approving this tonight until I see it all. And.
I wasn't expecting they would.
No.
Not to reveal too much, you know, before public comment and all that, just saying. So, yeah, I agree with you, Christine.
So I just want to be clear. So what Ms. Cervantes said is that we, we went and met with coastal staff numerous times about all of these general plan consisting things, and we arrived at these agreements that we're presenting here. We didn't get the final email confirmation until today from coastal on those. And in the staff report, we said, "We're expecting agreement from coastal on all these, and these are going to be in the clean copy of the LCLUP that was attached to the report for the record," and that we would go over each of these changes tonight. And so that's, that's what we're doing. These, these, with coastal agreement, are, are in the packet that the council is considering, and so therefore, the council can, if you, if you wish, consider the resolution with the documents. And if there's any final changes, we have to read those into the record for tonight.
If we wish, but I think that when, at least I read that, I didn't understand the extent to which there would be corrections and changes. And given its breadth, it certainly would be helpful, from my perspective, and perhaps from some of my colleagues also, if we had had some of those printed out specifically to be in front of us, to at least follow along with what's going on, let alone something that the public could follow along with as well, handout on the back table, if not seeing it in advance, which of course, would be the preferable approach. And given the delicacy with which this conversation has unfolded, it seems like it might be pertinent that we have the full view of what we're looking at for ease of following along, so that we can sign off on those changes, unless I'm misreading my colleagues.
So, so other, I, I guess I'm not understanding, other than the specific changes that Ms. Cervantes is explaining right now, for the council and for the public that's listening, prior to public comment, what, what is it that the council is, is requesting regarding these?
So, okay, let's look at the one, at least, I'll speak for me. Looking at what's on the screen right now, where it says, you know, not like this isn't a hot-button issue, just saying, the undeveloped San Pedro site, right? And the fact that we are even daring to talk about it, when I see who is in the audience and who is not, gives me pause right there. I'm just going to put that on the record. But when I look at this and I see LD-I-21, it's helpful to me to understand, I understand what Ms. Cervantes is saying, but can she tell me, go to packet page 103 and see the language as amended? Because that's what I'm understanding that you just said happened, that coastal sent this letter dated August 6th, staff evaluated what the changes were, and made some changes, and the draft that you have appended to tonight's packet includes those changes. Am I right?
But it's not a red-line version, so it's hard to find them.
So, yes, Councilmember Beckmeyer, so the version that's attached to the report essentially includes some of the, the clean language that we were anticipating coastal staff to approve, to confirm. The reason that we are doing it this way, and with recommending that you read it into the record, is because, as Mr. Woodhouse mentioned, we did not receive final confirmation on everything until this afternoon. So even though the clean version had anticipated that there might be some confirmation, it doesn't even include all of the changes that we're verbally discussing today, because we did not receive that confirmation until today.
Well, that's all the more reason to give the public time to look at it, too, right? Because they're not even prepared to comment on this, if you have, they haven't even, they don't even have a copy in front of them, right? And that definition you just read isn't anywhere.
If, before we conclude tonight, it would be really helpful to staff to hear from the council, the format in which you're going to want to see documents in the future. Because staff is getting mixed messages left and right. We've heard a lot of input about needing to see a clean copy of the document, which is what we've prepared in here, and highlighting in the presentation these, these changes that are, are in that clean document. If there's some sort of different direction, if the council's not going to be prepared to consider the resolution tonight and, and move on with this process, and we're going to add additional meetings, then I really want to know what council's direction is about how you're going to see documents and changes.
Well, from what I understand, the changes in the document that is in tonight's packet were not in our last iteration, because you'd received the feedback from coastal just right before the packet was going to, to press, really, going to be posted, right?
Some of it even just today.
But the majority of the changes are in the packet in a clean version of the LCLUP.
But to, what was received today was just the confirmation, right, of what you guys discussed that's in this presentation that we're getting right now.
Yeah, and the confirmation we received is the majority of, of what we do have in the clean version of the document.
However.
But we're specifically going over each of them to be clear and transparent, that many of these changes are non-substantial, and we've worked through with coastal staff, such as what is the normal planning language that applies, that would apply to this policy? And so we're, we're just trying to, you know, discuss each of them, and if there's any that we need to drill down in more, we could, you know, take a break and create a strike-through version of that one, if, if that's what the council is interested in. You know, it's, the, the intent, again, was to have the council consider adoption of these alternate modifications for submittal to the Coastal Commission tonight.
But, but we're still giving input on, I mean, so, and are, are you saying that, I mean, besides the general plan things, which are minor, you know, all the comments that we've been given on, on this document, on the spreadsheet of suggested changes are all incorporated in, in this also?
Yes.
Okay. Some of those, I think we were still a little vague on, and like, even tonight, you said, I might want staff to think about this one a little bit more.
Yeah, I didn't.
Correct. Part of the consideration and the deliberation tonight is for the council to say, okay, we agree with everything here, but we want to push back on the Coastal Commission to suggest that the, the, the term for the SSRAs is not 20 years, but 30 years. And you give us that direction, and we say, well, coastal, you know, is not going to agree to that, but we will build that into the alternate modifications and then send it off to them, and that starts their process to consider. The, the goal of what we, what we've said before is we've worked really hard for an understanding of modifications to this document that we, staff is recommending the council agree to, because Coastal Commission staff agrees to it, and it's going to make the certification process at Coastal Commission easier. And if, but council has the prerogative to make any changes you want, and we'll build those into the submittal to coastal.
I don't know that.
And that's the goal of getting, you know, we're at the 10th meeting of a three-meeting process. That's the goal, to get through and, and be able to submit this.
I hear you. I understand what you're saying, and I know the goal. I know it was your hope that it would be a three-meeting process, which I think quickly turned into a four-meeting process, so, you know. And I guess my real honest feedback to you in this regard is, this community needs to have confidence in this process, and so when there are changes that come at the last minute, before whatever meeting it is, the fact that the, this letter that we're discussing right now, and, and your, the staff's, you know, going back and forth over it, happened a month ago. You know, the letter came, it looks like it's dated August 6th, but it came right before or as our agenda was being posted. The staff couldn't evaluate it for us to be able to talk about it that night. What's ensued in the meantime is, you've had time to talk about it, and say, this is what this means, this is why we think it should be this, da-da-da, and you made those changes to this document, and you gave us a clean copy with those changes included, right? Hoping that we would go, oh, okay, I understand what you said, I understand what you said, yes, I vote, go ahead, do it. We can't do that, and here's why. Anytime we change language in this document, our community needs to be able to see exactly what we changed. what we changed, what it was before, what it is now. Before we vote on moving a document forward, they are going to need that. And I know that's, makes us have more meetings and it's a longer process, but it's the confidence in the document that's going to enable it to continue to move forward in something that we incorporate into the life of Pacifica. And if the foundation of it is, oh yeah, but they slipped in those last few changes at the last minute, however insubstantial they may be, it, it leaves that lingering question that isn't, does not inspire confidence. And that's where we are. We're really close to telling you that list, and I know you want it to be short, of things that we really have concerns about. I am, I have a couple of items, I don't know everybody, and hopefully we don't have 10 or 12 between us all, but we maybe agree on them. But we went through this with the general plan. I remember it. I remember it well. It was like, we're really close, we're really close, but we just wanna see it one more time, with no more changes that come from outside of us, right? And that's the issue, because these were promulgated by coastal staff as responses to our general plan. And so we've been waiting to hear what the import of them was, and, because you didn't know at the time, the last time we met on this topic. And now we have a better understanding of it, but I think we just need to see it in, you know, clearly where it is in this document. So, if we can do that, it would be helpful, and then we can post a copy of it for the community. We could take it up at our next meeting to vote on it. That's my opinion. Probably will need to be hearing from our public.
Yeah.
Public comment. But we're not done.
We can't reach the ESHA buffers. They're important.
I don't know how many more there are. Oh, no, there's only a couple.
I don't like two more. Maybe no three substantial structural modifications. Definitely gonna wanna hear about that.
Okay, we're gonna continue.
All right, moving on to policy ERI-1.
ERI-1. Okay.
The setback buffers.
Yeah, so as you may recall from previous discussions, there were some staff, coastal staff suggested modifications that implemented, or that added language to this first paragraph here regarding minimum 100-foot buffers and in no case 50 feet. The language you see here, starting in with the first complete sentence, "The 100-foot buffer may be reduced by a minimum necessary to avoid a taking for private development, provided that any unavoidable impacts are commensurally mitigated. The 100-foot buffer may also be reduced to provide required incidental public services for public development, such as burying cables and pipes, or inspection of, of piers, maintenance of existing intake and outfall lines and emergency repairs, provided that a buffer is as close to 100 feet as possible and in no less than 50 feet in any case, and provided that the creek resource impacts are avoided as much as possible." And so there, there's also some additional changes that were shown in the August 12th report, so unavoidable impacts commensurally mitigated, all, all as conclusively demonstrated by a qualified biologist to the satisfaction of the city and applicable resource agencies. And as you may recall from previous discussions, staff had concern with the specific phrase here, that in no less than 50 feet in any case. We tried very hard to negotiate with coastal staff to remove that. They will not remove that. However, between permit exemptions and allowances under our existing implementation plan and any future implementation plan that does allow for minor maintenance, regardless of any creek resources and some of the other policies that we have as well in the document, we think that the city may be able to complete incidental public services, be able to repair them and maintain them, even if they are within 50 feet of creeks. So, I think while this specific policy does say in no less than 50 feet in any case, there's other policies and other allowances that will allow the, the city to have those public services and be able to maintain them.
What assurance is there that we can get that into the IP?
It's not that we would be able to get it into the IP, it's that in our existing IP, we have existing permit exclusions for certain work, regardless of, of if it's located within 50 feet of a creek resource.
But we'll be updating the IP, therefore we won't be using the existing IP, so how does that pertain to this language?
So the exemptions and exclusions in our existing IP are almost identical to those in the coastal act. So it's assumed that the city will continue to be coastal act compliant. And so essentially what, what we're saying is, we have permit exclusions and exemptions consistent with the coastal act that will allow us to continue to do work.
I really don't like that word assume, but I, I did like the term, what we have in our current IP is almost verbatim coastal act, and therefore we'd simply be appropriating that wordage for the new IP. But again, that word assume is making me really uncomfortable.
Yes, I think there's certain policies in our new LCP that may be a little bit more flexible than what's in our current IP. So, like I said, our existing Article 43 that allows for exemptions and exclusions from coastal development permit requirements, a lot of that is, comes directly from the coastal act or from public resource code. We had previously talked about that in one of our other meetings. So, it can, very likely will continue to have those, or we will continue to have those exclusions to, and exemptions to coastal development permits because they are specifically outlined in the coastal act. There might be some additional allowances based on other policies in the, in the document. I think the big picture here is that coastal staff, when we are thinking about incidental public services, they're gonna require us to keep a 50-foot buffer from creek resource and mitigate as much as possible. And really what, I think the city has other options, other policies and other mechanisms in the implementation plan to essentially assure that if we do need to do work closer than 50 feet from creek resources for any stormwater maintenance of lines, emergency repair, we can still do that.
So is the reason we wouldn't reflect that IP language in the LCLUP language because it's too prescriptive?
Correct. So we do make a reference to it, I'm forgetting in which chapter, but we had a lengthy discussion about that. We make a reference to those code sections that specifically exempt coastal development permits for certain work. We had that conversations, that discussion was based on work at the Sharp Park Golf Course, and certain types of work that they're, they were concerned would be triggering many of these policies. And so we, it is in the LCP, we specifically outline those code sections in the coastal act that are similar, almost identical to what we have in our IP, that would allow for that maintenance, small work to continue, even in the appeal jurisdiction, even if there are certain types of coastal resources.
So, to get back to my original questions earlier on, in other words, here we have that higher level policy saying in general, specifically, no less than 50 feet, but then when you zoom into the implementation policy, it's, well, no less than 50 except as per the coastal act, which is very specific, which is the boots on the ground, here's what you actually do in those instances scenario.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And we were talking earlier about setbacks, and I thought I remembered reading this, and they call it buffers. So back where we had setbacks before, can it say buffers? I don't remember where that, I mean, that was way long ago. But because it was, it said setbacks, and Christine questioned what the setbacks were. So if it said buffers, I think it would make more sense.
But I think that's about placing new development.
Buffers, but it was.
Not enough buffers.
Comply with the setbacks. And setbacks to me are totally different, because I'm looking at a house setback.
Right.
20 feet here.
Same with me, from your property line.
Five feet, yeah.
What you're, where you can start.
So if it said buffers, it would make things clearer, I think, but.
Sure.
It's okay. No one else agrees, it's fine.
So, going back to our previous conversation a minute ago about what changed and where did it change, and how do we know which words were changed? In regard to the specific part that we're talking about right now, ER1, ERI-1 and ERI-24, in regard to creek and ESHA buffer policies, kind of a loaded topic and a big, big issue for lots of people, can you tell us exactly what changed, like point to packet page 139, da-da-da-da-da, and what was changed? Because that wasn't highlighted in here, respecting that, and I was one of the people who, I don't think I actually asked for it, I kinda thought you read my mind, that I would really wanted a clean copy, because I was going a little nuts with the, the dark underline and the green underline and the red and the da-da-da-da. But I kinda need both so that I can refer back. And what you're telling me is that some words changed in here, that in my version in my binder, that has all the strikeouts and everything.
Yes. So, I can read the, the previous version and, and reread the new version. So the previous version, the, the policy is on packet page 502 of the August 12th report. And so we did change this, the sentence structure because we were proposing that the allowance for, sorry, let me reread this. We were hoping that the first part of this sentence, as is read, "The minimum buffer may be reduced by a minimum necessary to avoid a taking," would be also applicable to the incidental public services. And so we, we had combined those two sentences. So previously, it read, "The 100-foot buffer may be reduced by a minimum necessary, one to avoid a taking for private development, or two to provide required incidental public services for public development, provided that any unavoidable impacts are commensurally mitigated, that the buffer is as close to 100 feet as possible, and provided that creek resource impacts are avoided as much as possible, and unavoidable impacts commensurally mitigated, all as conclusively demonstrated by a qualified biologist to the satisfaction of the city and applicable resource agencies." And so again, the, the new language splits the private development from the incidental public services, public development. And so for private development, the buffer may be reduced to a minimum necessary to avoid a taking, as long as impacts are mitigated. But for the incidental public services, it's, the, the 100-foot buffer may also be reduced by, may, may also be reduced to provide required incidental public services for public development. And then we did ask coastal staff to provide some examples, such as burying cables and pipes, or inspection of piers, maintenance of existing intake or outfall lines and emergency repairs, provided that the buffer is as close to 100 feet as possible and is, and is no less than 50 feet in any case.
And so, I wanna see the difference between my version and the version you gave me tonight. And so I'll show you how difficult that is for me to follow what you're saying and look at it, especially because I'm not looking at the August version, I have the earlier one.
Yeah, me too.
And so the packet page that you're referencing isn't the packet page I'm looking at.
It seems like having a red line version that has what was there and then what has now changed would be helpful as a final look.
We need both. I mean, that's how it is.
As well as a clean one, you mean?
Yeah. Because you have to see what the changes were, and then compare and read how it is now. Because the, how it is now is what you're approving, right? That's the final document. That's the, as a decision maker, that's what I need. So I don't know how to ask for it in a way that is clear. I guess before we leave tonight, the council should all agree on exactly what it is we're asking for, because it sounds to me like we've asked each of us or some of us for different things, and that's been hard.
I asked, I asked for a red line version for tonight.
You didn't get it.
And, no, I didn't.
I know.
And so I've been going by the August 12th version.
Okay.
Because it didn't do me any good to read the clean copy. I'm opposite of you.
Right. I need them both, yeah, side by side.
And given that coastal didn't seem to fully get back to us until today anyway, it seems like we were off in our timing for our druthers, even if we did have them. I would love to see a clean version and a red line version, especially of those things that have changed between the last meeting and this meeting, which specifically pertain to these coastal comments that now have been addressed. You know, when talking about the 50-foot buffer, that was a particular bone of contention with a lot of our public, and it's really appreciated that it's articulated that when it comes to private development, it can be less than 50 feet so as to preclude a taking. And then it applies to city property, the, where the 50-foot buffer needs to be. But I need the public to be able to see that articulation and not just hear it, or at least, I would find that very, very helpful. And that's aside from that, I would find it helpful to be able to look through an otherwise clean document, aside from those red lines, and see that. And so, you know, if there's a red line and also a not red line, that would be great. Not a full red line, just the red line of, you know, this.
No, Sue wants a full red line. No, just the new changes.
Three documents.
The new changes. The new changes is all I want.
I wanna see, I wanna see all of the input that we've given in this in a red line. I mean, we haven't seen what staff has typed, typed up from our comments, right? So it doesn't have to be in this format, it can be in the document, but not just the recent changes, like, you know, there's a lot here that we've given input on. I wanna go back and double check and make sure they heard us, right?
I mean, as I'm thinking in terms of the red, green, black line document that we had, I'm trying to conceptualize how it is we could have a red line, that's specifically all the changes we've made, to your point. But I think my desire in this instance is I, I really wanna see where the changes are specifically for this, which maybe is not an entire red line document, maybe it's just those handful of pages have these changes because we have that specific letter that goes along with this handful.
So, I, I, I tend to see the issue. I see the issue for the council, I also see the issue for staff, which is, right now, listening to five comments on what you're looking for, I'm not clear.
And they're all different.
And so, I think we, you know, we should talk about, what is the format and what exactly do you want to see when we come back? I mean, we did try to reformat this based on comments that we received since the last meeting from council about how it's so difficult for you to read a red line and you wanna see the final version. Unfortunately, today, you know, staff did not receive this until this afternoon, so it was, you know, the likelihood that we were actually going to be able to create a red line prior to this meeting for the public to review, that was not gonna happen, given the late hour that we got the comments back. But what I'm concerned about now is, I wanna make sure that what we do bring back to you is what you want. And I hear different comments, and so when we hear different comments without a majority consensus, and so it, it may not be unanimous, right? There, there could be some of you that want more than others and others that don't want, but we're gonna need a majority consensus on exactly what we want to bring back. Because we don't wanna bring back another agenda item for you that we have one council member unhappy with because it wasn't, you know, what they directed us to do, when in fact, we heard a majority of you say something else. So we need clear direction on exactly what it is, what format you want to So we need clear direction on exactly what it is, what format you want to see these changes, and, and what, how many, you know, what iterations of changes you would like to see in redline and then in clean copy. And I would imagine that, from our perspective, the easiest way is there should be a redline of one, of, one redline of, pick a date that you would like to see all the changes from this date to what we have today in redline. And then we would also like to see a clean version of that document. But I'm not clear on what is that date that you want all those changes to be incorporated from, right? What, what is, what's the original document for the redline?
If I may begin?
Yes.
Please.
That conversation you're going to hear from them, because I'm muddling through the various iterations and I feel actually fairly comfortable with the material I have in front of me to this point. But what I'm not comfortable with specifically is what's directly in front of me on the monitor. And what I'm saying as for my part, colleagues, feel free to agree or disagree, is that what I'd really like is, you know, and, and by the way, I don't think this, in this instance is an issue I'm having with staff, I think it's an issue I'm having with coastal for their exquisitely bad timing, both in terms of the August 6 document.
Every time.
And the not-quite-getting-back-to-us-until-this-afternoon thing. And within that context, I think that if there was just a handout on the back table of essentially what we're seeing in the monitor right now, if I had that physical thing, I would be comfortable acknowledging that I don't think my public would be satisfied by that, and I don't know that my colleagues would all be satisfied by that. But what I'd like to see is this in document form, so I could go over it preferably before I get to the dais, and definitely so that the public can see it. And so I'm saying that something relatively small like this, I'm not talking about a full document of track changes.
Oh, okay.
Well, I'm talking about more track changes than that.
Which is why I'm telling you, the four of you have at it, because I'm okay with what I got to work with, until I, until I get to this point.
To make a note, so you see staff's problem.
Yeah, yeah, so let's, so we'll, we'll try to find, I mean, I, we've given direction on this whole thing, so all these policies, anything that's an alternative modification that wasn't in here originally.
From what date?
Since we started going over this table. So, I mean, staff has taken our input and updated these policies, everyone that we've talked about that is in that column. So it's not all the policies.
But the changes were August 12 mainly, right?
March 2nd, perhaps?
Right?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Seen all the changes in, in the chart.
Because I think December 5th was the meeting at the community center regarding the introduction of the SRA concept.
Wait, so this, this, the whole table changed some when the, when we got the coastal commission in, but maybe it doesn't have to go back all the way to March.
Oh, November.
Oh.
No, don't be, don't be cute.
When we got a lot of changes from the coastal commission legal team.
I think that's when we first saw the matrix, was November.
I know, I just want to make sure that the direction we've given on all these policies, if they are alternatives, is, is what we agreed to.
Whatever date that is.
I mean, I agree with that, as far as the chart goes, like I ha, I haven't seen all the things that we've talked about in chart form. And that's what, what, that's what I need. It might be different than what everyone else needs, but it would be very helpful for me to be able to see it. This is the direction we gave here, is the changes that are made, like, yeah.
And you want to see it in chart form?
In chart form.
So, so you're not looking at the whole book?
Yeah.
It's a different thing.
But that's, I mean. It's okay if you don't, it's fine, I mean, I'll figure it out, but.
I mean, I think the whole point here is we want to have it, we want to be as confident as we can possibly be that we're all looking at the same thing, we're all deciding on the same thing, right? I mean, that's what we're talking about here. So we have the minimalist version and we have the complete version, right? And somewhere in between. I think for me, I, I don't, I think we need to settle on what date, because we've been, I think two or three of us have been looking at the June version, not the August, because there wasn't any difference between them. We had one meeting in July, we canceled our second meeting, there was no update to it, or maybe there was, but that's the, because we were proceeding through the policy changes. So we weren't, you know, we were making comments and saying, "We don't like this," and "Could we change that word?" or this, and we're trying to keep it to a minimum. We all made notes on our own little table, our green table. And so to be able to, for me, Mary, it's going between the table. Then you see it in, in context. In a redline version. And then you see the clean one, so you can read it. Because you cannot read, you know, I know it's not the most scintillating narrative, but truly, you have to read a clean version from front to back to have a sense of, if, you know, does this make sense? Does this reflect what we said? Wait, let me look, oh, here on this chapter CI 1-4, we said this, this is what the redline version said, and here's the final copy. The one we're putting forward to our community saying, "This is the final one that we're going to be discussing," right?
Well, for tonight's meeting.
Yes.
I went through, back to the chart, went through the whole entire chart again, used August 12th's redline, because I have no problem, I like the redlines. I can read them. And that's what I like to see, because I want to see the changes. We've gone over this for so long.
I know.
That I just want to see changes. I don't want to see what we already did, what's done, just changes. So now we're all talking different things.
No, just seeing all the changes, I think, is, is okay.
Well, Tiger said, "Just put all the changes on one piece of paper." Basically.
Specifically where this letter is concerned. Because we're, we're talking about this on our monitor in front of us.
Right.
Is the August 6th letter. Specifically for this, I would like to have had a handout.
Okay. Right.
That's the, and.
Can I suggest a break, please? I think we need a break.
Okay.
This is, this isn't helpful right now, so.
Okay, we're going to take 10 minutes, which. 10 till. Okay.
Record.
Recording in progress.
Okay. We are back to the meeting and we were discussing how we would like to see this and not quite agreeing, just like the city manager was being perceptive and noticed.
Can I make a suggestion, Mary?
Yes.
How about we take some public comment?
Well, what else didn't we not talk about? Or do you want to do that?
I, I think we need to talk about the substantial structural modifications at a minimum before we take public comment. And there, and there are two other.
Did you all come to a conclusion about format you wanted to see going forward? Or you want to just table that for later in the evening?
We're, we're going to make that final decision before we leave tonight.
Okay.
And we're going to agree to it. And if any one of us doesn't like it.
Too bad.
They're going to suck it up.
Okay, we're going to talk about, can, can I ask a question? Just because I was not here for the August 12th meeting, and I'm sure you discussed it in depth.
No doubt.
The tsunami zones, which are called two different things, tsunami inundation zones and tsunami, it's not hazard zones, but there's two different names. The, a lot of the questions I got from the public related to the tsunami zones, and how did other cities not have to deal with tsunami zones such as Halfman Bay?
Yeah, so for tonight's presentation, I was anticipating to discuss the specific topic when we were discussing the policy related to risk disclosure. So I can discuss that now, or we can?
Oh, no. I'll wait, thank you.
All right, and so would the council like to continue with the modifications from the letter?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
All right, so the next policy that was modified per the coastal letter is policy ERI-24, and this is the management of esha. So one of the bigger changes for this policy is that coastal staff requested that we add wetlands as well. City staff does not have any concern with this, because when you look at what an esha is, it includes wetlands already. So this is just a clarification that this policy applies to wetlands. So similar to, so one, one of the other changes to this policy was the general plan consistency changes had removed the second bullet point, then no new development shall be allowed within wetlands except as described in policy ERI-5. So that has been inserted in here. And then again, as we had discussed with policy ERI-1, the language, the second sentence and the third bullet point pertaining to the buffer has been modified. So previously, it read. So previously, it read, "The 100-foot buffer may be reduced by a minimum necessary, one, to avoid a taking for private development, or two, to provide required incidental public services for public development, provided that any unavoidable impacts are commensurally mitigated, that the buffer is as close to 100 feet as possible, and provided that esha resource impacts are avoided as much as possible, and unavoidable impacts commensurally mitigated, all as conclusively demonstrated by a qualified biologist to the satisfaction of the city and applicable resource agencies." And so the new language, very similar to the discussion we had for EIR, ERI-1, specifically relates to the no less than 50-foot buffer. So the, the new language reads, "100-foot buffer may be reduced by a minimum necessary to avoid a taking for private development, provided that any unavoidable impacts are commensurally mitigated. The 100-foot buffer may also be reduced to provide required incidental public services for public development, such as burying cables, pipes, or inspection of pipes, appears, maintenance of existing intake and outfall lines, and emergency repairs, provided that the buffer is as close to 100 feet as possible, is no less than 50 feet in any case, and provided that esha or wetland resource impacts are avoided as much as possible, and unavoidable impacts commensurally mitigated, all as conclusively demonstrated by a qualified biologist to the satisfaction of the city and applicable resource agencies."
And then, just to go back to what we said before, when you were talking about takings and such, there, was there still some kind of judgment or modification that the council, I mean, the, that we can, staff can make in recommendation or in applying that takings concept? In other words, it very clearly states, "No less than 50 feet in any case," but.
That's only, so the, and "No less than 50 feet in any case" is only applicable to buffers needed for incidental public services. So for private development, the buffer may be reduced by the minimum necessary to avoid a taking.
Thank you.
So does not apply to residences. What does it apply to in terms of city land?
Yeah, so it would apply to essentially public infrastructure near, in eshs and wetlands. Essentially, any stormwater maintenance facility, infrastructure that the city may have in these areas, emergency repair, so there might be emergency flooding that the city may need to address, things like that.
Okay. In case of emergencies, does this prohibit us from working on what's already there?
So this does allow for some emergency repairs. You may recall from some other, from our previous discussion in chapter six, we do have some allowances for emergency coastal development permits, and essentially it says, "Then the city won't need to." Or if it's a private developer obtaining an emergency coastal development permit, then we, you would have to apply for a regular coastal development permit. So there's emergency work, but then there's also the later permitting that may be required.
Thank you.
All right, the next one, the next changes are to the substantial structural modifications definition. So staff did go back and forth with coastal staff regarding this definition. There was some confusion for, as, when we read the, the letter, there was a bit of confusion as to how this language was applicable, so we did have that clarification with coastal, and we did make some modifications that are not shown in their, in their letter. And so generally, we think that the, the new definition gives more flexibility, because it does consider each individual structural component separately. So essentially, I think, per their letter, for example, a project that alters 20% roof framing, 20% floor framing, and 20% foundation would not be considered a 60% alteration. Each of those components would be considered just 20%. And so that example would not trigger the substantial structural modification policy, because it would not be a 50% alteration of any of those individual structural components. So this is slightly different than how city staff had previously been interpreting the, the definition, but it is more flexible to the way that it's calculated. And then there was some clarification as well to the exclusions. So the council had directed staff to add a list of exclusions. They did remove plywood roof sheathing from the exclusion list. And then there was just some clarification to that list to ensure that it was clear that those were non-structural components as well.
Why the plywood roof sheathing?
It, it is a structural part, I mean, it's part of the shear, you know, to protect from earthquakes, all the nailing has to be specified by an engineer, it's not just an underlayment for the roofing.
So a clarification on underlayment, because your plywood sheathing would be, oh, it's there?
Underlayment is still here, yeah.
I know, but that could be, that could be your plywood, because that's an underlayment of, underlayment of a roof. So I think it covers a lot more things, because you could also use it for, under your siding, underlayment. So maybe it does cover it. Okay.
Yes, additionally, there was some modifications to the last sentence here, so, sorry, I need to go all the way to the last three. The last sentence has previously read, incremental structural changes that commu, sorry, I cannot pronounce this word, cumulatively amount to replacement of 50% or more over time shall be considered an SSM. So the new sentence here means increment, states incremental changes to floor area and individual major structural components that amount to alteration, removal, or replacement of 50% or more over time shall be considered an SSM. So essentially, this is stating, I think previously staff had interpreted this to say, 50% change of your entire structure would trigger an SSM. This clarifies that it's 50% of each individual structural component. So. So a property owner can come in and change 50% of their roof, or not 50%, but 49% of their roof framing. They can change 49% of their floor framing, and that will still not trigger the SSM policy.
And we removed the word cumulatively to help clarify that it's not accumulation. It's individual structural components.
I think you skipped the part about the dry rot, though, that is important to talk about.
Yeah, so as I mentioned, they added the term "non-structural" to some of the exclusions to clarify that it's non-structural work. So I believe that was added to other non-structural roofing materials, non-structural remedial actions to address termite infestation and dry rot, and other non-structural modifications required to comply with state and our federal laws and regulations such as disabled accessibility improvements or seismic retrofit upgrades.
So I just think... No, I, people might be surprised by this. I mean, I think it's a, I think it's a good thing, but... We don't want to let people, let their buildings rot to the point where the structure is rotting and then have a free pass at replacing it, right? So what this, what this does is say, you start to see dry rot in your siding, that doesn't count. So fix it then, get rid of the termites, you know, lower your soil if you don't need to before it starts affecting the structure. Because if you let it go too long, it's, it's going to count.
All right, and so... The next policy that was discussed in the coastal letter is the coastal hazards risk disclosure policy. So there were several questions on this policy from the last meeting. So on this slide here, you can see the response to some of those questions. Staff was asked, "How many parcels are located in the coastal vulnerability zone?" We did count those. There's approximately 620 parcels in the currently mapped coastal vulnerability zones. And then, in the last three years, the city has accepted 32 applications and has approved 23 coastal development permits. So this is data that we researched in order to give the council a bit more perspective of how many projects, how many parcels would actually be required to comply with the risk disclosure policy. So we, this is just in the last three years. This is the number of 32 applications have been submitted and 23 CDPs have been approved.
And just confirming that you're not counting tsunami inundation or evacuation zones in this coastal vulnerability zone?
That's correct. This is just for the CV. One moment, I do need to go back to Chapter 6. All right, so there were some minor revisions done to this policy. One of the things that we removed was the language that referred to deed restriction. We made the terminology consistent with the title of the policy for risk disclosure. And then there was some changes.
And sorry, and that's just because, that's all it is, is a disclosure. There's no restrictions if you have to put those in on your property.
Correct. And some of the additional changes that were made are to the bullet point. Second to last, at the August 12 meeting, there was discussion among the council about there, that bullet point has a list essentially of coastal hazard conditions and certain defined triggers that would require that development be removed. There were several questions as to who would make that determination, what did some of those triggers actually mean, and things like that. And I'm going to turn it to Assistant City Attorney to explain the public trust language that we have here a little bit more.
So, so as council may recall, there were questions last time about the public trust doctrine and why it was included here. And as we mentioned before, this is just sort of the universe of triggers that could require a coastal hazard risk disclosure. And impressing, where's the, sorry, I'm sharing it with Ms. Kenyon. Thank you, Kath.
Would you like me to read that?
Yes, please.
So the change is... "If land comes to be impressed with a public trust interest under the common law public trust doctrine," which is confirmed by the State Lands Commission or by a court of law.
And, and there is a common law public trust doctrine. That is a legal term of art. It's a legal theory. And what, the Coastal Commission initially just wanted public trust in there. And in our conversations with them, I said, "That's too broad, and who's going to determine that?" So we consult, you know, we collaborated, and they and we agreed on the limiting language of the public trust doctrine capitalized, which is a legal term, which is confirmed by the State Lands Commission because it's the State Lands Commission that has jurisdiction over public trust lands and actually, you know, makes that determination. And so, you know, we wanted to make sure that there was some vehicle to understand, or agency to understand, who is going to make, for the public to understand, what agency is going to make that determination, and it's the State Lands Commission.
Could you just, for the public, explain what that means in plain language?
The public trust doctrine?
Yeah.
And five minutes are left.
Yeah.
When a, when a property is impressed with a public trust, what does, what does that mean?
It has, it has a variety of means, I mean, of determinations. It could mean any land that the state of California deems has public trust value, meaning that it is a public commodity, essentially. It is so important to the public that the agencies and the courts have jurisdiction to determine whether or not a particular entity or agency is violating the public trust. So you could violate the public trust by allowing, you know, untreated water into streams. So if, if there is a, and usually this comes up with dams and things of those sorts, or cities taking water from creeks, waterways, streams, rivers, that's when the public trust, that's where I'm used to seeing it most used. There's also a public trust doctrine with regard to state lands, which this is predominantly dealing with, and that deals with the waters. So there is a, you know, the State Lands Commission has jurisdiction over the waters, coastal area, along with BCDC.
And the beaches.
And, and the beaches, correct. And so they make a determination as to whether or not a certain activity or undertaking is violating that public trust, which is, there is no simple definition for public trust. It can mean essentially whatever they interpret it to mean, except that it has to relate to an issue that is of such importance based on common law doctrine, based on case law, based on jurisprudence, which is why it's a legal theory that we as a city cannot make that determination. Ultimately, it has to be made by an agency with authority to make that determination. It's either a court of law, or it's the State Lands Commission, usually, or BCDC.
And, and in this case, I mean, the beaches, the ocean, I mean, it's, the idea is that sea level rise is moving in, and so what was your property may become public property over time, right?
Correct. And that determination will not be made by the city, and it will not be made by any individual. It will be made by either the State Lands, well, in this case, the State Lands Commission.
Thank you.
All right, and related, there had been a lot of questions, as previously mentioned, regarding the tsunami inundation zone and different policies and different LCPs. So that was a question that we did ask coastal staff, specifically regarding Half Moon Bay's policies. And so what they stated is that the Half Moon Bay's LCP contains two policies that relate to hazard risk disclosure, Policy 7-4 and Policy 7-8 in their document.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that one more time? Thank you so much, Stephanie.
Policy 7-4 and Policy 7-18. And so the Policy 7-4 is what we had seen in August. I had shown it on the screen. It's a simple paragraph. It speaks directly to tsunami inundation zones and the requirement for a risk disclosure in that area. Policy 7-18, on the other hand, it's contained in the shoreline hazard section of their LCLUP and specifically requires an assumption of risks and disclosure for new development that may be subject to shoreline hazards with a finer grain of detail. So that is, additionally, that's language that predates the Coastal Commission's public trust guiding principles. And it's also a language that predates some of the conversations that California Coastal Commission had, has had with the State Lands Commission as, as well. So essentially, we were also told by Coastal Commission staff that Half Moon Bay has a very different set of coastal hazards and vulnerabilities. And so that is one of the reasons why their policy is different than the policies that they're recommending for us. They also provided examples of more recent LCLUP policies that were adopted in 20, or certified in 2023 for two other jurisdictions that are much closer to the policy that we're seeing today for Pacifica because it does include that more comprehensive look of the risk disclosure for coastal hazards.
It might be helpful for Mayor Valdross to, to see the new tsunami map that was prepared, I think, for the last meeting, and, or did, did you understand that? Okay. So that's, that's the difference between the inundation and the evacuation area, where the evacuation area was much bigger. So, and then we approved a contract with a consultant to update these maps.
Okay.
But we don't have the official ones yet.
Okay. Yeah, I read a comment about the maps, so...
So this issue of tsunamis as being, is this the, the conversation that we had before in regard to our, our laundry list of what coastal hazards are? Like bluff erosion, flooding, sea rise is mentioned, and then tsunami is listed? And I think the challenge about that is the science was so nonexistent, except for very long, long, hundreds of years studies. And that was the concern that was raised about including tsunami as one of our coastal hazards, considering the history of it impacting this area is nonexistent. And so the question is, is this something that's included in a disclosure? Is this listed as one of our coastal hazards? What's the impact of having tsunami included in our coastal hazards?
Yes, so tsunami is in the definition of coastal hazards in the glossary of, of the document. At the last meeting, council directed staff to add essentially exclusion language to the coastal vulnerability zone definition to specifically exclude tsunami inundation and tsunami evacuation zones. So that language was added to that definition. So when we are looking at the policies of Chapter 6, very clearly, the policies related to technical reporting and siting design are only applicable to coastal vulnerability zones, which exclude, they do not include tsunami inundation zones and tsunami evacuation zones. The coastal risk disclosure policy is applicable to coastal development permit approvals in the coastal vulnerability zone or the tsunami inundation zone. So in Chapter 6, this, this policy, the risk disclosure, is the only policy that would be applicable to tsunami inundation zones.
And can you tell me where that policy is in our document?
In...
Chapter 6.
Which staff report?
See? I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the June staff report, which our document is in the 200s, not the 500s. And I'm looking at the staff report that you gave us for tonight's meeting. So somewhere about, also in the 200s, I would imagine. Nope, maybe not. Because that's Chapter 6, right?
Yeah, so I do not have the, the June agenda packet in front of me, but for today's agenda packet, it's on page 204.
Oh, see, I was close, the 200s. 204, okay. I'll find it on this other document. Okay. So CRI 21, that's what we're looking at?
Yes.
I have a different question if, unless you're waiting for something, okay.
I won't be listening to you that quickly, that's okay.
I'm just referring to a letter from Richard Harris. So he was concerned, and again, the way, the way we were concerned about the tsunami word being in the definition of coastal hazards before, there, there are two other policies in H-G-2 that talks about development in hazardous areas. And that says, "Site and design development in 100-year floodplains and tsunami hazard zones to minimize hazard risk without the need for armoring." So I don't know if that conflicts with what you're just saying, that the tsunamis aren't really hazard zones.
So like I said, the tsunami is still in the definition of coastal hazards. That is needed, and we cannot remove that, otherwise we would be inconsistent with the coastal act.
So, but you said there were no siting and design or technical reports required, and this is siting and design in this policy?
Yeah, so per Chapter 6, the Chapter 6 policies are not applicable to the tsunami inundation zones. So the Chapter 5 policies that are for coastal, natural hazard zones, there are some policies that refer to tsunami evacuation zones and tsunami, they do not refer to any tsunami inundation zones. They refer to tsunami evacuation zones. So as I had, I did discuss that with coastal staff, and that's really where we would, this is an area where we would nail down in the implementation plan to really determine what would be needed from, per the policies in Chapter 5 versus the policies in Chapter 6. But all indications show that the most onerous, or the discussion, the conclusion of that discussion is that the onerous Chapter 6 policies are not applicable to the tsunami inundation zones. That is what I confirmed with coastal staff today.
Okay, but, but this NHG-2 doesn't say tsunami inundation zone. It just says tsunami hazard zones.
Yeah, so some of the policies in Chapter 5 may still be applicable to other areas. And that can be said for any of those other areas. Chapter 5 talks about stormwater, flooding. There's, that chapter is for natural hazards.
I'm very confused. And then the, and I'll just read the other one, NHI 30, which is tsunami evacuation zones, which includes the tsunami inundation zones, but more. So for new development in the tsunami evacuation zone, require the use of low-impact engineering techniques such as elevating structures above projected water levels to mitigate impacts to people and structures. So anyway, seems like it's siting and design issues to me.
Yes, one other thing that I will point out is that... Yes, one other thing that I will point out is that when you compare the coastal vulnerability zones, the, especially the stormwater flooding layer versus the tsunami inundation layer, those are almost identical. It makes sense because when you have a tsunami, you, it's the landform where water can come on land is very similar to the stormwater flooding as well. So yes, there's language in Chapter Five that pertains specifically to evacuation zones, and there's language in, in Chapter Six that pertains specifically to tsunami inundation zones. But I think really what we're, the discussion for Chapter Six may need to be separated slightly from the discussion of, of Chapter Five, really because we're looking at different mapped areas versus the general coastal hazards.
Point me the page number on the Chapter Five policy, please.
So NH dash G two is on packet page one seventy. And Policy NH dash I twenty-nine is on packet page one seventy-one.
It was thirty, not, not twenty-nine. Well, it fits right in his letter about tsunami evacuation.
But I take it these policies are delineated from the SSRA areas? Or no?
The Chapter Five policies are specifically related to flooding and flooding areas, different than the Chapter Six policies, which are specifically for development and what development can occur in different areas.
So I'll just think of Fairway West, right? So I think that whole neighborhood is in a tsunami evacuation zone. It's not in a, all in a, only a little bit, so no tsunami inundation zone. So basically, anything new that's built there, maybe there's other options, but there's going to have to be lifted up over. So does that mean that a substantial structural modification in those areas would require that too?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the second question?
My brain just went out.
Substantial structural modification, if it's a...
Right.
Thank you.
Right, I was trying to remember the acronym for substantial structural modification. Thank you. So much easier to just say it all than SSM. Anyway, SSM in conjunction with tsunami evacuation. The question is, so Fairway West, which largely is in tsunami evacuation, if there's an SSM, would they be having to accommodate tsunami evacuation from that point in terms of their development? Did I capture that right, Councilmember Bowles?
Thank you, thank you. We started at four, this is why, our brains are already zoning out.
That's right, we only have five more hours to go. And our sense of humor is waning.
I gave you a dirty look. And you deserved it.
As long as you're here in person to give it to me. Very good.
Um, I would need some additional time to analyze that, analyze the different zones, but I can probably provide a response before the end of the meeting.
I appreciate that. I don't know if Councilmember Bowles and I are on the same page, but I think that I had hoped we had addressed such things with the introduction of the tsunami inundation zone.
Me too.
And if this is indicating that such is not the case, perhaps we should investigate where tsunami evacuation is still used and advocate for switching out inundation in such places.
I agree.
I agree.
Yeah, I do too.
Control F.
Control F.
That's the spirit.
CC. Find.
We haven't done it yet.
Yeah, I know.
Ready for that. Me too.
We're still on the coastal commission letter. No, it changes.
No, that was the last item for their letter.
Well, going back to packet page two oh four, what was your original question, Councilmember Beckmeyer or Mayor Protem?
Thanks a lot. Put me on the spot. Was it about the coastal hazard risk disclosure? Is that what you're asking me about?
If that's where your question may...
Yes, that is packet page two oh four of this one that we just...
This new packet?
Yes.
Okay.
So I remember we had a lengthy conversation about this, and you weren't here at that time, I think, but maybe you were on Zoom for part of it. So, and there is a reference in this letter to the local government working groups highlighting the importance of disclosure policies. And so while that is true in certain instances, I think the concern is that this is going further because it listed all these items, and I wanted to make sure that we weren't being too restrictive with our disclosure requirements or too, including too many things that have to be disclosed. And that was my original question, and I think you answered it in terms of this concern about tsunami inundation zone versus evacuation zone. So that's helpful, although it is still mentioned in the risk disclosure. So the bullet points that are on chap, on page two oh four, I think Assistant City Attorney, these were the disclosures that you were saying would be required? This is the exact language?
Right, exactly. And the idea is that this provides the public clear, transparent information that would be included in the risk disclosure, rather than just saying you're going to have to fill out a risk disclosure and then waiting till the implementation plan, or we put the risk disclosure in front of them. This actually specifies exactly, or, you know, fairly close to what's going to be in the final risk disclosure document.
The concern was that if the language is left vague, and then the risk disclosure was developed afterwards, property owners would, would be alarmed at seeing what actually would be required by the coastal commission through their approval process. So their thought is, in order to be transparent, is to put it in our LCLUP so that people who are thinking of coming in for a CDP will actually know what it means in order to receive that permit. And as you point out, they are just disclosures, they're not restrictions. And according to the coastal commission, these are their standard disclosure requirements that they would require in their review of the CDP.
Right, and I think where we start to get into, we, we move off of disclosure and into another realm is when we have unconditionally waive any claim of damage. And we discussed this before. That is a significant, it's a very far-reaching statement that I think when you said, it's nice to have transparency so people know upfront, rather than having this unfortunate discovery later, well, it's also very unpleasant for people to contemplate waiving all rights when they, they don't even have a project. They're starting, you know, the, the implication is that their property is, is condemned in some way. It's like two, and so what I'm trying to get at is how do we make it clear in our document that this, exactly who this applies to, exactly when it's going to be implemented? Because it's easy to assume when you read this, oh, anywhere in the coastal zone, if I want to put a roof on my house, this, I have to waive my rights, I have to assume all risks. I mean, it's very intimidating language that is in the abstract when you're not actually doing it.
That, that, I, I, I understand that, and you are correct, that it, it does appear to be an overreach, considering they haven't even submitted an application for a permit. But this, they wouldn't need to apply this disclosure on their property unless they had received the permit. That is a condition of their permit approval. And just as a matter of law, any discretionary permit that the city issues, we have immunity. So we are immune from liability for our permission, our permitting of development. So that's just as a matter of law. So I understand that it, and, you know, I cannot disagree with you that, that could appear daunting, but the reality of it is that as a matter of law, this is true whenever a permit is issued, a discretionary permit is issued.
Are you saying that's true now?
Yes.
Absent this document being adopted by this council?
It is true now.
But what you said was discretionary permit, so getting a permit for a roof wouldn't normally now require that.
If it's, if it's, but if it, if it requires coastal commission review, or it requires city, you know, city review, and it's ministerial, you're correct. This would, this would add an additional layer of exposure from their, from their perspective. But in reality, I think that their ability to assert a claim against the city for permitting their development, what would that, what possible claim would that exist, right? Usually there's a claim if we deny it. There's a claim if we're not doing what they're asking us to do. But if we are giving them their permit, and they incur damage because of that permit, I, it's hard for me to imagine what that claim would be.
I'm building on to my house and a city truck is, backs up into my, because it says in your, I'm in the middle of developing it, then it says basically that I can't do anything about it, injury damage connected, in connection with the permitted development.
Well, I, you know, that's, that's, that's interesting that you interpret it that way. It can be interpreted that way, you're correct. I hadn't, I had assumed that it was only in connection with the permit. But now that I read that... Right, with the permitted development. And so what Councilmember, what the mayor is saying is that if there is, a city tree damages their permitted development, it's a few years later, is, have they waived their claim against the city? I don't think they have. That's a, that's a, that's a, that's a separate action, right, that has its own damages. And I don't think this disclosure would apply to that, but I, you know, I do think that we can clarify that.
Okay.
That language to make sure that that is not how it's interpreted.
I continue to have concerns about this part. I mean, it's just, it's just going to be a difficult aspect of our LCLUP. And I feel like the reason it's a concern is because we're, while I see the, the benefit in some ways of being upfront with people, I think we're, we're almost discouraging people to maintain their property. And that's a big worry about, as you were mentioning before, Christine, we, we want people to repair their properties. We don't want it to turn into a blight situation. I mean, you can drive around town, you see them, you know, there's a few houses that are like, yikes, maybe we need to find some services to help them. So...
I believe that's the interpretation.
This is what my biggest worry has been about this policy. It just feels like a very extensive overreach when you're at the front end of the process. You're not even in the process. I mean, it's just the policy is a blanket. And I recognize where coastal's coming from on this because these are the risks, and you made that clear, Assistant City Attorney, these are the exact policies that they require when proj, when projects are brought to them on appeal. And so I think it's efficient, from the coastal commission's standpoint, for it to be in our, in our LCLUP. But I'm not sure if it's fair to our citizens, and that's what my big worry is. And I'm trying to figure out, is there a way that, I think we tried to address it by our definition of coastal vulnerability zones or tsunami inundation zones. It used to say tsunami evacuation zones, so we limited it in that way. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, maybe I am, when we talked about our mapping that we're going to undertake, that our coastal vulnerability zone region, that's not a defined thing. There may be, depending on the hazards and the impact of sea rise or the impact of the new science, isn't that likely to change? Or is that a fixed thing right now? Our coastal vulnerability zone?
It'll change, it'll change.
Right, but, but these policies apply whether you're in the coastal vulnerability zone or not. Just being in the coastal zone, you need these disclosures, right? If you're doing any work, that's my understanding.
That's not what it says.
This is for the inundation zones and the coastal vulnerability zones.
I lost where you were.
I'm already worried about it.
There is a, there is a point that, you know, the Assistant City Attorney wanted to point out, and, and I, I think it's worth mentioning to the council, if, I, I, to the mayor's point about the unclarity about bullet three in terms of unconsciously waive any claims or liability against the city, if you look at the bullet previous to it, the clear intent of all these, and, and the bullet ahead of it, is they're releasing and accepting in liability and releasing the city and accepting the risk associated with any damage from coastal hazards, right? So we could clarify that third bullet point and say, in connection with coastal hazards associated with the development. That is what the intent is. It is not, it, this really is just a, a method to be transparent so that they know and future buyers of that property know that there are potentially coastal hazards. And so it is limited, I would assume, to coastal hazards, and we can clarify that in bullet number three. But it does limit the applicability to, of these disclosures because they're only saying you're disclosing the hazards of coastal hazards related to your permitted development. That's all. So they could not come back against the city, which frankly... So, they could not come back against the city, which frankly, I don't think they would be able to do as a matter of law in any event, for a erosion that causes their property to, you know, erode into the ocean, or a tsunami that came and destroyed their home. They would not be able to use that coastal hazard as a basis for a claim against the city. But in fact, I don't believe they would be able to do that in any event.
And at least one property I know of in Pacifica has all of these deed restrictions, because their project was appealed to the Coastal Commission, and the Coastal Commission put all of these deed restrictions onto their property in order to allow them to build it. It was new development, so a little different. But it, they did use these items. I don't know exactly how they, they worded their deed restriction, but they do have one.
Right, so there's one. And if, are these the numbers that you gave us earlier? Stephanie, 600 parcels, 620 parcels, 32 projects, 23 CDPs? Is that the universe, if you will, of, of what we're talking about in terms of this policy?
For the 620 parcels, yes, under the current mapping. As was mentioned, we have entered into a contract to update the mapping, so that may change that number. And then that second bullet point, the, over the last three years, the number of applications that have been submitted to the city versus the number that has been approved, that's just to show you essentially the, the kind of metric over the last three years of potential coastal development permits that may have been, if this policy had been in the books, would have been applicable to.
I'm sorry?
Eight approved per year.
Eight per year.
Thirty-two applications, 23 approvals, that's approximately eight per year.
And I, I will also add that the numbers over the last three years, that's over the entire coastal zone, not just the coastal vulnerability. So, the number of CDPs approved in the coastal vulnerability zone is less.
Oh, okay, that's what I was asking. I thought this was for the coastal vulnerability zone.
And might it be, we might see more approvals if we updated our LCP?
Or maybe not, if people go, I'm not waiving my rights to everything. I don't know.
Fair enough.
It's hard, hard to know. All right.
We're done? Oh, yay! Sorry. We are going to close our question period, and finally, we're going to go to public comment. I only have two cards, and, so I'm sure more people want to speak. So, Lisa? Wait, I don't see Lisa. She's gone. Mandy Sackett? Okay. Just one, there comes Jeff.
You got some more takers.
We'll let you wait till they finish. Oh, two. Okay. Mandy, sorry, did I, please, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Hello, council members, my name is Mandy Sackett. I'm Surf Rider Foundation's California Policy Coordinator, and I work on sea level rise planning statewide. And I just want to acknowledge all the work that's gone into this update by both the city and the community. And thank you, council members, for asking good questions, good, hard questions tonight. And it's clear there's a lot of care going into this. But, you know, I'm here to address the shoreline resiliency, special shoreline resiliency area concept. Local governments across the state are grappling with this, and I think, you know, Pacifica is one of the early adopters, a lot of folks, a lot of different communities are gonna be looking to see what happens here. But it's my responsibility from, with Surf Rider, to ensure that these neighborhood-scale approaches don't lead to unchecked armoring of our coast. Our coastline, it's not just a private backyard, it's a public resource. It's cherished by everyone, and not just those who can afford to live in a beachfront community. The bottom line is that seawalls worsen erosion, and these decisions that we're making are gonna determine which beaches vanish forever and which we can protect. Surf Rider doesn't support the SSRRA in concept. We don't think there's a way to do it legally, we're not in agreement with Coastal Commission staff. New development cannot rely on shoreline armoring, full stop. That is a fundamental Coastal Act policy. So I do think, you know, we're gonna continue to hold that line. We, we appreciate the efforts to set parameters and make a compromise around, around this concept, and the idea of creating coastal adaptation resiliency program, I think is a step in the right direction. Is that my one-minute warning?
No, you have more time.
Okay, so, just that we're, you know, thank you, we're, I think this plan sort of falls short, and we hope that you will kind of go back to the drawing board, cut out the SSRAs for now, and do a full community visioning process. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Abbott, followed by Jason Janest. And, sure, if Jeff doesn't mind. Okay, Cindy, followed by Jeff, and then Jason.
Hello. It's not one o'clock, that's good news.
It's only 10.
Hi, Cindy Abbott, West Shore Park, and I also appreciate all of the long hours and hard work that we've all put into this process. And I want to give a shout-out to Acting Deputy Director Stephanie Cervantes for stepping into this and doing such a professional, informative job in answering all of your questions. I think we're really close to getting a new LCP, but I would like to direct, have you direct staff to remove Section 6.9, Special Shoreline Resiliency Areas, before transmitting this to the Coastal Commission. Special shoreline resiliency areas. Wow, what an inappropriate name. Shoreline resilience is the inability of a, is the ability of a shoreline to withstand and adapt to the effects of climate change and other hazardous events. That's the definition. What we're trying to do is stop the shoreline from being a shoreline, and stopping its natural processes. What we're really talking about here is a neighborhood-scale seawall. And a seawall that would continue, and that would allow, as we've heard both tonight and in other presentations, to allow for new and intensified develop in a known hazard zone. That will never be consistent with the Coastal Act, just never. You've talked about how do we get consistent? We want to be consistent? That will never be consistent. I've heard you talk it tonight, and I'm so glad that you've had this thoughtful interaction with each other, asking the questions about the resiliency areas. But this concept is not there yet. Remember, it just got dropped on everybody in December, and it's a really big deal. And you're gonna need more time to be able to really flesh out what it is that you're trying to do. And to understand what's the impact on staff, what's the impact on the community, what's it gonna cost? And is it really a holistic plan for our entire Pacifica community and coastline? We're not there right now. The carve-outs of our coast are not a vision. We need to remove the SSRAs, and then come together with an update to the plan at a later time. Because that's what the Coastal Commission has also talked about in their local government working group. Doing this in more manageable chunks, when you can really get in-depth into something. Perpetuating harbor armoring of the coast, and specifically these SSRAs, is not a viable response to the climate crisis and sea level rise. We must do a better job at planning for the future, and not put future generations at risk.
Thank you. Jeff Gueye. Ed, Jason, can he go last? Okay. Okay, so Jeff, I'm, I'm trying to, you know, work with everybody. Jeff, Ed, and then Jason.
Thanks. Before my timer starts, can I ask, I emailed in some, a comment to 16 different email addresses, and I got nine NDRs, nine, nine bounce backs.
I got it.
Because my message was blocked as spam. And so I wanted to know from the city clerk, Sarah, did my emails go to the planning department and everybody else?
I confirmed that I received your email, and I forwarded your email to the planning director and deputy director.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
So it was also included in the packet of public comments, written public comments received by 12:00 PM.
Terrific, thank you. Because I know the only people who got it are you six.
Yeah, I, I spoke with our IT staff, and it could have been an issue on your mail servers end, or it could have been inclusion of like the city council group in addition to the individual council members, and having duplicate, you know, recipients. That, that's what I was told, but.
I used the same last.
I confirm that I received, I confirm that I received it, and planning staff received it.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, what a goat screw. I stand before you today outraged and deeply concerned by the recent changes proposed by coastal staff to the LCLUP. Since March 2023, these changes have been nothing short of a disaster for Pacifica. The coastal staff's incessant demands and confusing wording changes have only added to the chaos. And our city staff has been utterly incapable of providing clear information, often giving us flat-out wrong details. Every single demand from coastal staff's August 6 letter was accepted by city staff. Who approved this? One glaring issue is the removal of plywood roof sheathing from SSM exclusions. This absurd change means that replacing a roof is now considered an SSM, bringing it with deed restrictions and waivers. Why does coastal staff care so much about this exclusion? It has nothing to do with protecting the shoreline or addressing climate change, it's simply a tactic to prevent development. The tsunami language and maps in the LCLUP are equally problematic. Policies NHG 2 and NHI 30 impose citing and design requirements in tsunami zones, despite misleading claims that the development in these zones are not restricted. Additionally, policy CRI 1 states that development on properties outside of coastal vulnerability zones will be reviewed as if they were inside these zones. This is a blatant overreach that imposes unnecessary restrictions on property owners. To make matters worse, the tsunami inundation maps were created by a summer intern with limited GIS experience, and no publications were cited for their development. This is unacceptable. We need accurate, reliable data to make informed decisions, not amateurish maps that lack credibility. This LCLUP is confusing and contradictory, and it does not reflect the hard work that the city and its residents have put in over the years. City staff claim that the process is not a reconsideration of policy emphasis or direction that was approved in the 2020 LCLUP, but it clearly is. The current LCLUP looks and sounds nothing like the document that the city and residents worked on for so many years. We demand simple, clear language about tsunamis, like what Half Moon Bay used in their LCLUP. We must eliminate the backdoor language inserted by coastal staff and seek immediately help from our state legislators to protect our rights and stop Coastal Commission's blatant overreach from destroying Pacifica. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Ed?
Sure, thank you. Ed Ochi speaking as strictly as a resident and property owner within Pacifica. First of all, I want to start off by thanking staff for all their hard work, continuing to interact with the Coastal Commission, and trying to develop a document, a usable document of monumental kind of proportions. I also want to thank the council for spending all the time trying to analyze such a monumental document. It's, it's a major undertaking, and I really appreciate the efforts and the careful thought I'm seeing expressed at this meeting. However, with that in mind, I have to point out, you've reached the point of madness. When you actually look at this, when you don't even know what document you're looking at anymore, what changes have been made? You can't agree, are we looking at the June document? Are we looking at the August document? What changes have been made since this argument, August document? When you're looking at changes still being requested by the Coastal Commission, if I understand correctly, as late as today, and trying to make any kind of decisions, this is complete and total madness. What you need to do is take a timeout. You need to give the staff time to be able to work interactively with the Coastal Commission, to come up with a single draft that everybody can look at, everybody can work with, understanding that they're gonna have a number of questions that they need to bring back. That's very fair to bring back this list of questions. But you need to be looking at a single, consistent document. You need to give yourselves, and you need to give members of the public enough time to review this document. Not little bits and pieces, not little fragments, not, oh, we changed this this time. You need to have one comprehensive document that can undergo thorough and reasoned review. So take the time. Please don't let yourselves get forced into trying to make a decision because of some sense of artificial urgency. And with that, thanks a lot for your thoughts on this.
Thank you. Okay, Jason? Oh, okay. Why I put you last? No, I'm kidding. So, is there anyone online? Okay. I want to say, public meetings are limited, public forum, meaning that there are rules on commenting at these meetings. Comments on non-agendized items must address matters within the subject banner jurisdiction of the city. Actually, we're only talking about one item, and if you stray from that item, I will give you a warning. And I will instruct the, Emily, to cut off the system and.
Well, first, first you, you.
Sorry.
Consult with the city attorney.
Wait, I would consult with the city attorney first, and then, oh. And then warn them a second time. And then we would cut off the microphone. Sorry, I neglected to read that before you people spoke, but you did great, thanks. Okay. Emily, people on the phone, there are five.
We have five raised hands. The first is for Casa Casillas' iPhone.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Casa Casillas, that would be me, Sam Casillas. I know you guys are, are sad that I'm not here today, but, but in person, but here I am. But city council members, but now it is doubtless that you have seen the many comments from the Pedro Point Community Association, the Pedro Point residents, where the overwhelming feedback has been to not change a known environmental hazard zone into a residential that would undoubtedly turn into a natural disaster. Yet the very thoughtful data along, and continues to be fallen on deaf ears. It is sad that this is, this city council has continually chosen the path of litigation, and all the legal losses have never resulted in any accountability. You have ignored us, so we have no choice but to move forward with the lawsuit at some time, and at this point, we're just checking the box, and we understand that. It appears that the city is again willing to jeopardize the whole general plan update, and waste our taxpayer dollars on an ill-advised strategy to ignore science and its own citizens. Additionally, now they are proposing new hard armoring at the, what they're calling the Claritin Gap, which is illegal under the Coastal Act. Also, it was interesting to hear Councilmember Bickmeyer start at the coastal, at the coastal neighborhood scale adaptation workshop, that what is needed is a community conversation on neighborhood by neighborhood scale to develop long-term consensus, yet continually she disregarded the Pedro Point request for a neighborhood plan. But I'm not surprised that she. But I'm not surprised that she says that one thing and does another. And now Beckmeyer's comments just omitted that we have, that, you know, now they want to extend the seawall. I also want to note that Frank Villa and his Sam Carr cronies and Smart Coast cronies do not speak for Pedro Point. So if this city council is determined to go to litigation route, I will remind everyone that these lawsuits are costly and drawn out, so don't expect the LCLUP should be resolved in the next couple of years. But hopefully by then, the citizens of Pacifica will elect responsible council members who answer to the citizens and not lobbyists. That is why we need to support candidates like Mark Hubbell and Myra Espinoza for city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller.
The next raised hand is for Irene.
Go ahead, Irene. Irene, I can't see the screen, so I don't know whether she's muted or unmuted.
She's unneeded.
Irene, can you go ahead? Okay, we'll put her at the end of the stack and come back.
The next raised hand is for Mary Ann.
Go ahead, Mary Ann.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Vadoas and council members. I am speaking tonight from my car, I just left the meeting, as a concerned citizen, business owner here in Pacifica, property owner and housing provider, a housing provider to the constituents here in our city. And I am concerned, when I, I've been hearing in these meetings about what everybody wants to do with the armoring in Sharp Park and Rockaway, and especially from other constituents that don't live in those areas, that live up in the hills, this doesn't affect them. And so they're okay with those shoreline protections going away. And organizations that aren't here in Pacifica are talking about wanting, you know, our beaches back and whatnot, and the Coastal Commission is doing right by them and should. And I, I think the Coastal Commission has done a lot of great things, and I love the fact that you guys are trying to work on a resolution and compromise with them, because yes, of course, there's sea level rise and we have our king tides. However, owning property in Sharp Park, Pacifica, and seeing how even our constituents that live there, some of them are not for these SSRAs, I'm not fine with any of that. This is not fun to be going through right now with the city, and I know it can't be fun for, you know, our council, and it can't be fun for our staff and lawyers either. And we do have to come up with a compromise, but having other citizens of our cities saying that, you know, we're not for SSRAs and they need to go away. Talk to our people that live in Sharp Park, that have property there, that have businesses there, that have tenants there. This is our livelihood, and what you're planning to do while you live up on your hills and look over at your view and say, sorry, you know, we want our beach back, that is not acceptable. That is not okay. You know, we're coming up to an election year, and people are, don't need to be in two camps, you know, one that's all for climate change and one that is for building. You know, where are our neighbors that we look out for each other? There was a fire up on the hill, and there was a landslide. Wouldn't you want us to help support you, to help make your life better, to make sure that you're okay? Why don't we get that from some of our other folks, whether you're on Pedro Point or you're up in Fairway Park or wherever, way up on the hills, or way back in the back of the valley? We need your help. We need your support.
Mary Ann? Can you wrap it up, please? Your time's up.
Oh, I apologize. We want us to, our neighbors to help each other out and be supportive and not look at trying to take away our lives and livelihoods, because we'd have your back.
Thank you. Thank you. Next caller.
The next raised hand is for Clifford Lawrence.
Go ahead, Cliff.
Good evening, and sorry I couldn't be there this evening. We've been struggling with these SSRAs, and they've been very unpopular. We didn't know how they got introduced in the first place, but, just a second, sorry, I'm trying to deal with some technical issues here. Okay. They've been very, I would say fairly unpopular, I think you would agree. Many people have asked you to remove them. My thought is, if staff is so convinced that their interactions with the Coastal Commission on this issue has ensured their proper acceptance of this, if that's the case, and you submit it with this, and it's rejected, is staff and city ready to go with whatever Coastal Commission offers at that point as a point of compromise to get this done? Or are we going to continue to play this rather challenging game, which has questions of appearance of, how should I say, sincerity or faithfulness? This is something we need. We needed to do, move projects forward, and we need reasonable people to do reasonable things, both here and at the Coastal Commission. And I look forward to seeing that we step up to the challenge and get this job done. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Cliff. Next caller.
The next raised hand is for Cherie Chan.
Go ahead, Cherie.
Hi there, hope you can hear me. Cherie Chan, I live on San Pedro Avenue. Thank you, Mayor Vadoas. Thank you again, everybody, for your hard work, especially staff and council members. I have safely tucked my kids into bed and look forward to seeing some of you tomorrow. You know, you've heard me, us talk about this, members of the Pedro Point community. We've been doggedly trying to raise the issue of somehow this fundamental change to the Pedro Point wetlands from somehow getting slipped in into this, into what was a coastal recreational-oriented land use designation into this random, you know, residential land use designation through an inadequate environmental impact report in a wetlands for years. The proposed local coastal plan established furthermore, the proposed local coastal plan erases well-established coastal access points and established trails, which were actually documented in the current local coastal plan. They've been there since 1980. This isn't Coastal Commission or residential overreach. These are conditions on the ground that have been documented as part of a current local coastal plan since 1980, and again, part of the public doctrine since Justinian Roman times or common law. I mean, it's like these laws are built upon each other. Residents and visitors have been openly using and open and notoriously using these public coastal access easements for years. The new proposed coastal access map removed coastal access points and trails, which are already established. So I understand that we have a new property owner that, you know, bought into this property in 1995 under the current LCLUP and wants to sell out. But property rights also means being responsible and understanding the conditions on the ground and being realistic about what kind of profits you can make in the first place when you choose to speculate on a wetlands. I certainly knew I was buying into a beach town, and I expected that the coastal recreational opportunities, which could have existed, would flourish. It's unfortunate that the current land user or landowner hasn't allowed that. And as a property owner in the coastal zone, I understand the privileges, risk, and responsibility that that entails. So let's not erase our beaches and trails. They're what brought us here. Either we shouldn't erase our beaches by erasing them or a map, or we shouldn't erase our beaches by building seawalls that temporarily hold back the water. These are what ensures a Pacifica economic vitality and is what we need as a community to move forward. Thank you again, all of you, for your service, and I'm so excited that we're going to finish before midnight.
Thank you, Cherie. Next.
The next raised hand is for Summer Lee.
Go ahead, Summer.
Hi there, Summer Lee. I was going to say something else, but I wanted to say that there's some misinformation in an earlier commenter, and just for the record, Cindy Abbott, who just has been asking studiously for a vision that's more long-term and more sustainable than a medieval wall, happens to live a half block away from the ocean. And that commenter also made a polemic and divisive comment about those who don't live on the coast, and apparently doesn't, she doesn't live in Pacifica. I myself am not on the immediate shoreline, and I hate for the, both the loss of property, but also the loss of habitat and beach in my lifetime. The world was not just meant for human buildings. I'm registering a voice that is asking for a long-term plan that doesn't cost the rest of us for the sake of pipe dreams of those who decry their private property rights and sadly whose homes won't be saved by a wall. I'm also registering yet another comment about how these SSRAs are persisting with no seeming support. And as somebody who's struggling to keep in this and watch this, I think everybody's struggling, and I don't know where this is going. So I, I don't know. It's painful. I also ask the community to just stop this polemic misinformation and fear mongering. We do care for each other in Pacifica, and it's a known fact that when people are coming from a place of fear, it's really hard to, to think clearly. Thank you, everyone, for sticking through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Summer. Do we have?
The next raised hand is for Stanley Lampert.
Go ahead, Stanley.
Good evening, Mayor Vadoas and members of the city council. I'm a land use lawyer who practices throughout the state. I have been assiduously following your proceedings, and I represent interests in, in your city that have got shoreline protection, but I'm not authorized to speak on anyone's behalf this evening. But the reason I'm commenting is you were last focused on CRI 21, and I think there's a key point that, that needs to be addressed. This is a document, while it says hazards risk disclosure, it's stated as an agreement. You have to record a document in which property owners acknowledge and agree on behalf of themselves and all successors and assigns, and then you drop down to bullet six. And it says waive any rights that might exist under applicable law for shoreline protection for structures during the duration of the permitted development is present on the property. So if you happen to do something that is not a substantial structural modification, and therefore you continue to be an existing structure, and if you still qualify for structure protection under the Coastal Act currently because you're pre-1977, you are nevertheless waiving all of your rights to protect your property under this provision. And, and so the idea that, that there would be properties that could still be protected if they are pre-existing structures, and if after Casimir that it gets extended to all structures, this would waive all of those rights. Under the California Constitution, Article 1, Section 1, there is an inalienable right to protect property. And this would essentially condition every permit, whether it's for a gazebo or something else that's fairly minor, you would waive any right you have under the Constitution to protect your property. And this is the most troubling part to me of CRI 21, and I wanted to bring it to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the last raised hand is for Irene.
Go ahead, Irene. Irene, we've tried twice, and we can't hear you. Please send your comments to the city council, and we will read them. Okay? Thank you.
There are no other raised hands.
Okay, seeing no other commenters, I'll bring it back to council.
Can I ask a question following up on the last speaker?
Yes.
CRI 21, point number six, bullet point number six, I was following what he was saying, read it. Is it specifically SSMs that trigger CRI 21, or is there more than SSMs that trigger CRI 21?
It would be any project that requires a coastal development permit approval.
So how minimal might such a project be? Installing a window?
No. Generally, basic like-for-like replacement is done through building permits. So a lot of people said re-roof, I'm going to have to do X, Y, Z. Those do not require coastal development permits. So re-roofs in the coastal zone are approved, reviewed and approved via building permit. Same thing as if you're replacing a window, reviewed and approved via building permit. Trying to think of projects that would have triggered coastal development permits. Adding a room addition? An ADU would require coastal development permit. Trying to think of some other ones.
Okay, so A, specifically a CDP, not just your run-of-the-mill permit, but B, you're trying to help our housing crisis by putting in a unit that would be used for affordable housing? Bam, deed disclosure. Waiver, excuse me.
Yes, well, the, the expectation would be that that development is built to not need future shoreline protection per the other policies.
Could you just bring up CRI 21 one more time, please? Oh, could you bring up CRI 21?
Thank you.
Is there more than this? I don't see this waiving rights to...
Bullet six.
There you go. And this is specifically in the coastal vulnerability zone?
Or? Coastal hazard zone?
Correct.
Or tsunami inundation zone?
Correct.
So as the council reads this, and this, this seems to be a sticking point, it would be good to get some council direction about this policy to staff. What we know is that this is, this is absolutely a, one that Coastal Commission staff, you know, thinks needs to be in the LCLUP. We've said that before, and if, if the council has substantial changes... And if the council has substantial changes to this, then the way the process would roll out is that if council adopts alternate modifications, submit them to coastal staff. The coastal staff is unlikely to recommend to Coastal Commission to certify as submitted. And Coastal Commission will discuss and most likely include this disclosure, this policy, in their comments. And then it would come back to council for consideration of whether to accept that or not or withdraw the LCLUP submitted.
My immediate question, and I asked a similar question in advance. How many parcels or about how many parcels are in the tsunami inundation zone that are not also in the coastal vulnerability zone?
That is difficult information to obtain because we don't have a map with both of those together. Excuse me, I did essentially just a visual check. It was less than 10.
Okay. So...
And to provide some more context for the intent of this bullet, to the city manager's point, this is an important point for the Coastal Commission in terms of assuring that our LCLUP is consistent with the Coastal Act. And the reason is this provision is essentially waiving the rights to future shoreline protection. That is essentially what they're waiving. Because this shoreline protection should only be allowed for the duration of the permitted development. So they're not entitled to future shoreline protection following the permitted development life of their existing project, should that shoreline protection not exist. Not that the shoreline protection won't exist, but they don't have any rights against the city or, you know, the Coastal Commission to force us to provide that shoreline protection. And with regard to my previous point, that same point applies here, which is I'm not sure that they would have a claim against the city for not proactively providing future shoreline protection. But that was the purpose, is my understanding, for including that particular waiver.
I'm having a hard time because I agree. I mean, if you're in a tsunami zone and the map said 475 years was the time period for the tsunami zone, there haven't been any. And I want to build an ADU in my backyard, and then I have to waive all these rights. But by trying to help other people, it just, I don't know, it doesn't sit right with me. I know what you just said about Coastal Commission not approving it. But after a while, hearing that and hearing that, it just still hurts me.
So if you're building in a coastal vulnerability zone, presumably that means that you're building in a place where you know there are serious issues. And as far as the inundation zone part goes, like, for the purpose of the broader conversation and then maybe coming back to that specific point, okay, we're talking about less than 10 probably houses. I want to know what that is specifically at the end of the day. But before getting to that conversation point, the vast majority is coastal vulnerability zone, and it rides together. And so I would shift the conversation there initially. If you're in a coastal vulnerability zone, I think where my brain is hiccuping is all those definitions around pre-coastal development that is currently entitled to those protective structures versus how small is the change you're making that would inform you waiving the right to protect your property? If it's an ADU, okay, if I put an ADU there, I mean, I'm trying to do the right thing and help the housing crisis. But on the other hand, I'm putting an ADU in a known flood zone. So I'm inviting somebody for low-cost housing where they might be flooded out. And I'm adding on in a substantial way in such a fashion that it might trigger, I'm doing substantial development, and what right do I have to seawall? So I kind of... The scale is leaning in that way. But what I want to know is how small a change are we talking about that triggers a coastal development permit? That a house that currently has a right to protection because it's pre-Coastal Act, okay, it's not installing a window, but maybe it's installing, I don't know, a new kitchen? Does that mean that it's no longer pre-Coastal Act development? And it gets back to that. And I was following the substantial structural modification conversation to the point of, okay, 51% because it's kind of a common thing and you have to draw a line somewhere. I'm not saying that's the ideal place to draw it, but I at least can follow the conversation to that point. If we're taking away that piece out of this conversation and now they must waive what they currently have the right to a protection for, that's where I'm struggling. Just so I'm clear about what's going on in my mind.
I have a potential example, too. The Pacific U-Villa, so that complex of about eight condos north of Ocean Air, that's definitely in a coastal vulnerability zone. Their cliff is eroding quite a lot right now. And they're applying for a coastal development permit to work on some drainage. But they were also hoping to add a few more rocks while they were doing that, which they have a right to under, you know, pre-Coastal Act development. So, yeah, I mean, this is a huge change.
You know, we get these comments about Half Moon Bay's LCP, to which it finally occurred to me, wait a minute. I have one of their council members on speed dial. Actually, I have several of the council members on speed dial, but one of them I regard as particularly savvy in these matters. And so I gave her a call and had a good conversation. And she reminded me of the Casamira litigation that's ongoing. And while she did not address the concerns our community members are raising, on the one hand, what she did obviate is that this conversation is within the landscape of that ongoing litigation, which might change definitions once the appeals process is over. And she was kind of going, well, once it gets to the California Supreme Court, and to which my response was, no, when it gets to the US Supreme Court, and I have a sense of who those people are at this point. It's not about agreeing or disagreeing. It's about having a hunch of which way they might lean in their judgment. I just wanted to add that into the mix.
But that particular lawsuit is about defining development after 1977, right? I mean, we're not doing that yet here. We're assuming that that policy is in effect, that we can still have shoreline protection for things that were built before 1977, which is a lot of our structures. So...
Okay, so the question is begged, at what point do we say to a home in the coastal vulnerability zone, we will not allow you to persist if that's what you need in order to persist? Because I think what the message here is you're too big a liability in conjunction with what nature is telling us. You know, weigh it carefully.
May I speak?
Yes.
I think what I've been hoping for is some brilliant inspiration that I could suggest a more narrow limit on this particular policy. I think the question you asked a minute ago or a few minutes ago was of Deputy Director Cervantes, was how many properties are in the coastal vulnerability zone and, I believe you said, tsunami inundation zone? And the policy says "or." So that means something different. And my concern is, you know, I think there's so many examples where you can say, I don't really know, but I know it when I see it, right? So I think about, you know, properties that I can think of in town that are much more vulnerable than others to the naked eye today. And those properties, I go, uh-huh, this fits. But what I worry about is this being too broad and applying to many properties that aren't in the near term and possibly for the life of the project they're trying to do are going to be subjected to these concerns. And that's what I, I think that's my biggest worry, is that it's, you know, when we say subject to coastal hazards, including but not limited to episodic and long-term shoreline retreat and coastal erosion. We know there's some erosion happening today, this week, next week, in the next year. That seems, you know, reasonable, I think, in terms of really strict policies like this. But impacts that are going to hit and are projected to be increasing in 50 to 75 years from now, it doesn't care, this policy doesn't say a timeline. It just says episodic and long-term. High seas, ocean waves, storms, tsunami, 475 years. I guess what I'm concerned is that this is casting a really wide, perhaps, a wider requirement or it's hitting a wider number of properties than maybe realistic. But I, you know, until the applications are put in, it's hard to know where the properties are. So I'm just wondering if there would be any way to limit it or define in a different way? Because a coastal vulnerability zone, maybe I'm not understanding exactly... I mean, I know we have a map that shows us where that is. But I think it's more about likelihood, too, you know? And if it's tsunami, I mean, let's just say if it said just tsunami on here, I would say no way. Because that's just so out of the realm of likelihood to be something in our area of California. But yet, you know, ocean waves, storms, coastal flooding, those things happen all the time. Should someone waive their rights because we have coastal flooding?
I know, I'm just trying to understand what the distinction is that you're trying to make. Because I understand you're trying to limit the applicability of these risk disclosures. But you're, and you keep mentioning tsunamis, that issue. And then Councilmember Big Stick mentioned that it seemed likely that for shoreline protection, you, in a coastal vulnerability zone, that sixth bullet point made sense. So where I thought you were going, which is why I wanted clarity, because I could be wrong, is maybe trying to limit the applicability... Applicability, it's late. To just coastal vulnerability zones and not tsunami inundation zones. And then I don't know that, you know, that, you know, if that is the will of the council, we could certainly take that back to the Coastal Commission and see what they say. But other than that, I don't see a practical way for any more distinction to be made because that would require a fact-based determination. And who is going to make that fact-based determination? And what are they going to make that fact-based determination on? So, and that is not the purpose of a risk disclosure because it really is trying to talk about potential risks, not, that could be speculative, but that's the point, right? So that could be one suggestion, if that's what you're talking about. But to make it more refined than that, I think that would be difficult just to craft.
But back to the shoreline protection structures. Sorry, I'm getting really tired. I mean, right now, these properties have a right if they're pre-Coastal Act, right? So, I mean, is this the Coastal Commission's intention to take away that right if they do a little project that needs a CDP?
Well, I don't think they can take away that right, but you can waive it.
If it's pre-Coastal Act, the Coastal Act doesn't apply to it.
That's what bullet six is about.
But that's what the gentleman was arguing, that you're waiving any rights that might exist for shoreline protection structures for the duration of the permitted development as present on the property.
Maybe a question Ms. Cervantes can chime in on. But if you're pre-Coastal Act and you are getting a CDP for shoreline armoring, then there's going to be requirements and disclosures built into that CDP that the Coastal Commission will require, correct?
That is correct, yes. But if you're getting a CDP for some drainage work so that the erosion isn't so bad, and later you want to put in some rocks, can you do that?
So, well, you would be subject to this disclosure, right, if you're in this case?
But does the disclosure prevent you from adding shoreline protection or modifying shoreline protection that you have?
I think so, right?
Yeah, I think we would need to ask that question of coastal staff. My first impression is no because the way that this bullet point is written, it's for the duration of the permitted development. So you're permitting the development with a CDP. So in your example of the stormwater drainage, they may not be able to come back and request protection of the storm drainage that was permitted per the CDP. But they may have a... Their actual structure will still be pre-coastal. But again, this is a question that we could clarify with...
I think we need clarification.
So you have a house, it's in a coastal vulnerability zone, you put in a new kitchen. Your kitchen waives the right to shoreline protection, but the house itself doesn't?
Well, it depends on how extensive your kitchen is. If it's more than 51%, then it's new development anyway. And then you don't have a right.
Sure, but I kind of acquiesce to the SSM. That's, I followed that. What I'm saying is less than an SSM. You put in a new kitchen, it's less than 50%, but you get the CDP for it. Does the kitchen have the protection whereas the house? Or does the kitchen not have the protection whereas the house does? And I'm not trying to be funny in that. I'm trying to get at, you know, again, that's where I'm wrestling because if you're currently...
Yes, I understand the question. So the way that all these policies would interact, so in your example, you have, you're adding a kitchen, it's more than 50%, 51%. It's triggering the SSM definition. So you would be required the coastal development permit. You would also be required to address all other non-conformities per the LCP on the site. So that would mean that... So that would mean that you would need to ensure that your entire development on your entire site is, does not rely on shoreline protection. So vice versa, you put in a kitchen, you're under 50%, you're not an SSM. That addition still needs to, outside of the SSRAs or if the SSRA policies are not applicable, that new kitchen needs to be designed, sited, to address the coastal hazards. The rest of the development does not. And so if we're going down this same path, that is the permitted development, so that portion of your structure would not qualify for shoreline protection structures, but it should have been built to not need them.
So you put your kitchen on stilts, it doesn't need a seawall, but the rest of your house that does still gets it? I appreciate it, but I'm, you know, there's a point I'm making illustrating it this way. And it sounds like, as silly as it sounds, I seem to be on the right path.
Well, I'm not sure. I'm not sure that that is the correct interpretation, because we do need to discuss this with the Coastal Commission. Because I do think that, if nothing else, there is ambiguity with regard to the application of this that we need clarity on. I mean, I would say that if you are permitting a drainage, right, something that is small and not an SSM. To, you know, Ms. Cervantes' point, I agree that that probably would not prevent you from doing shoreline protection if you're a pre-coastal development. In your example, if you're actually remodeling your kitchen, or doing something that you need a CDP for that is less than an SSM, and you have construction that could implicate shoreline protection, which I think a kitchen remodel would. So I don't think it would apply there. I think that, to your point, yes, they would be prohibited from future shoreline protection for that permitted development, which is a kitchen, but it's a kitchen that's part of a house structure. The drainage is not part of the house structure. That could have, that has independent sort of structure, not necessarily integrally tied to the house itself. But I honestly think that, I need clarity from that, from the Coastal Commission, to really give you a definitive answer on that.
You know, I think that I and maybe my colleagues who are struggling with the notion of transparency within the context of rules and regs that we're trying to kind of defuse from being gotcha situations. If we're all down with, you know, folks in coastal vulnerability zones having to waive their rights, that's one kind of conversation. But if it's within the context of working with an organization that's building things into our document whereby it's, "Oh, we thought that you need to do a 51% change before it's going to trigger your inability to armor." Except for, "If you do your kitchen over here, gotcha." I'm not comfortable with that. I am comfortable with the real conversation of whether or not you're in the coastal vulnerability zone, you should have to waive your rights and do these disclosures. If that's the conversation, I can have that conversation. I can't have the conversation of, "Is it 51? Is it not 51? Is it Coastal Act, pre-Coastal Act? It's pre-Coastal Act, but it's less than 51, but gotcha." That's what makes me want to go out of my head.
And so do you suggest removing that bullet point and seeing what the Coastal Commission says? Like, what are the suggestions?
I mean, I definitely want to hear from coastal what the reality there is. If it's not a gotcha, great, let's proceed with the conversation and have it in real terms. If it's a gotcha, then, again, we can proceed with real terms, but I think I need that clarity.
And this is a little different, but what's the process for applying for a CDP? I mean, how different is that than a permit?
How much detail do you want?
Does it have to go to Planning Commission? Of course, it has to go to Planning Department, but does it have to go to Planning Commission? How much extra items do you need than you would a regular permit?
Yeah, so typically, the materials that are required for a coastal development permit are more, and they're more detailed than what would be required for a building permit. So a building permit is essentially you meet building code, you meet fire code, you meet a set of objective standards. Your proposal doesn't trigger anything else, any entitlements. Staff can review it and approve it through a building permit. Coastal development permit applications, the required materials, it depends on the scope of work that you're proposing. We have a planning application checklist. So usually what happens is people come to us, they say, "Hey, I want to do XYZ on my site." Planning staff will look at your zoning, will look at your proposed work, and will say, "Based on those two things, based on your site, these are the project materials that we need." And we check them off for applicants. So if somebody's doing actual development, we'll require plans, we might require certain reports. If someone needs a conditional use permit because of the type of business that they are, that's going to be a different type of requirements for that. Once we get all that materials, again, it depends what the project is, but it usually gets routed to all the main divisions in the city, might get routed to some other agencies as well for review of that application. Once staff has determined you have a complete application, you meet municipal code, you meet the general plan, you meet local coastal program policies, we take that to the Planning Commission and have a public hearing.
So it's going to cost the person a huge amount of money to go through with the coastal development permit as it is, and in all of this, it may end up that people just don't come and get permits. They just do the work and pretend like no one ever saw it. So, opinion?
Mayor, I just want to bring up a time check, it's 10:54.
All right, so.
I'm done.
I move we extend to midnight.
With what?
There's a lack of a second.
Try again.
Is there?
No one answered. Okay, well, I'll call, I'll see, is there a second to that motion? There is none. So that does not pass, and please try again.
Oh, no, I tried. I'm open to other suggestions.
I move that we go till 11:30.
My second.
Oh, and we can do a regular vote.
Push the button vote, although my knee pushed the button before.
With the motion to extend the meeting to 11:30 made by Mayor Vodarlos and seconded by Councilmember Beer, that motion passes unanimously.
Through the mayor. Do you mind if I say something? I haven't said very much tonight, and I think part of the reason is what Ed said, that we've reached this point of like, "Stop." Like, my brain is so full of all of this, I feel like we're talked out. And so I guess there's a couple things that I would like some clarification on from some of our public comments. One of them was Mandy from Surf Rider, and she used the term unchecked armoring. Is there anything that we can do to check the armoring? Like, how can we assure that armoring is not going to go unchecked? Does that make sense? I mean, I don't know how to do it, but when I heard her use that term, I thought, "Well, that's not what I would want. I wouldn't want unchecked armoring." Right? Thoughts?
Yeah, may I respond to that?
Please.
I think that when I heard that, the question that occurred to me was essentially, well, why is it that coastal staff is willing to go along with that? I do believe that generally speaking, Coastal Commission's impetus is to take away, well, discourage armoring, soften my words, for the sake of the beaches being existent. So my question is, in response, why is it coastal staff would go along with the premise of an SSRA to begin with and think that it's Coastal Act compliant?
Well, and I think that's a very good question, right? And when I was listening to your meeting the other day, and you're talking about the neighborhood approach, and then I heard some of the Commissioner's responses to that, I wasn't sure if they were too clear about the neighborhood approach either, and is an SSRA a neighborhood approach? And so I think there were some questions, and it just seemed like, "Oh, we're not quite sure yet." Right? We don't quite understand what this looks like. We'd rather see a regional approach. I don't know if I'm saying that in the right way, but it really did make me stand back for a minute to think, what will, what will the Coastal Commission say? If we turn in a document that has an SSRA, what are they going to say? I don't know. Is it safe for us to send it in and wait to hear feedback, or is that going against what our community is telling us? And so I have all these questions that I'm grappling with, but I think it would be a really great idea if we could try to get down to brass tacks, I guess.
So one thing that I will point out on your initial question about, you know, is this unchecked armoring? I think that the Coastal Commission would say no because of these other obligations that they're putting in that the council and your public have issues with, like this risk disclosure, like this bullet point six that says that you are only entitled to shoreline protection for the life of the permitted development. Right? That, in our discussions with Coastal Commission attorneys, they need to put, I'm just telling you what I think they're going to be saying, that they need this in order to make this neighborhood approach consistent with the Coastal Act, because it can't be unchecked armoring under the Coastal Act. Right? And so this is a way to create limited exceptions to allow armoring only in certain specified circumstances that are, you know, clearly laid out in this LCLUP. In addition, this risk disclosure is also making clear that you may be entitled to protection currently for the life of your development, but you're not entitled to protection or armoring in perpetuity. There has to be a check. So that's the best explanation I can give you as to why I don't think the Coastal Commission would view this as unchecked armoring.
Thank you.
If I can just add something to that for a minute. I was more worried when we started these conversations, like having, back at Terra Nova, when I was asking Christian, like, "What do you mean? Does this mean that, like, Beach Boulevard will forever have a seawall?" And he said, "Yes, we would just keep replacing it in the same place." And I think that's what, I mean, having these policies that have an end date, having, you know, being able to see how the conditions are changing, at some point, it's not going to be realistic. Right? I mean, you can't build a 20-foot-high seawall, you know, can't pay for it, can't see the ocean, I mean, it makes no sense. Right? And the other thing that was happening in that Coastal Commission meeting, I think it was that one, where other cities are presenting their plans, maybe that was, I can't remember if it was that day or not. No, it wasn't that day, because I think I. Santa Cruz, Arcata, Arcata especially.
Yeah, they gave the examples.
But, so, yeah, in both of those instances, the Coastal Commission is allowing seawalls. Arcata was to protect a sewage treatment plant, Santa Cruz is to protect a road. But both of those cities have done longer-term planning that is showing that they're taking those out. Right? So the seawall is something interim while they're waiting for a long-term plan, which is more of what the Coastal Commission wants. That's what I don't see here, and that's why I'm not sure the Coastal Commission is going to go for it.
And so the adaptation plan, you don't think, is that?
Well, yeah, sure, but that's something we have to do anyway. But, and that's where I think, you know, the mitigations that we're going to need to do for this are going to be substantial. And I wish we had the plan first so that we could know, like, "Okay, if we're doing this here, what are we doing here?" Because, I mean, what do I tell people at Manor? "I don't know. You might not get to your armory anymore, sorry." You know, you might only have 10 years left on your property. Right? So. Yeah, I'd rather do the adaptation plan first, and then maybe, maybe these do make sense, and, you know, we can take it from there.
You read the 2019 that we transmitted?
Yeah.
Correct? I feel like the journey from where I was first in the room in 2018 till now, we've come a long way toward at least discussing some of the approaches that bring us to a point where the protections that we're specifically requesting for the foreseeable future are within the context of the rest of those kinds of protections being, as Councilmember Beer stated, checked. And so within that context, I think we've come a long way, though I hear what you're saying, but I feel like balance in this community can be difficult to strike despite perpetually hearing feedback that sounds very 50/50. I'm going to stop there.
You have more things to say. You said a couple of things from the public.
I have something to say.
Okay, great.
Something that, you know, I hadn't given realistic consideration to, Kevin, I hope you're sitting down, is something that's been called for, and I can't really imagine how, what that would look like, is the idea of submit this LCLUP without SSRAs in it. It's like, but we did that already. You know, it's kind of my response in 2019, because there was no such thing as SSRAs. And I feel like the policies, all the one we spent all this time on with bullet point six, as an example, are all crafted with SSRAs in mind, you know, in existence in the plan, as these offsetting checks, as you're talking about. So if you just took SSRA out, it seems like the whole thing has to be rethought. Right? Which is just overly daunting, and I can't even imagine doing that. The idea of adaptation first, plan second, I'm wondering how the implementation phase works with regard to those kinds of plans? Is it feasible, or is it like, you know, "That's not what it is, Sue." Is it, you know, "Here's our broad policy plan, and our implementation plan can be involved, that specific adaptation plan that we will be rolling into our," I keep calling it the shoreline management plan, but I know that's the wrong term.
Coastal Access Resiliency Program, perhaps?
Yeah, that. So that's a. So that's a separate thing, or that's part of our IP? That's my question. Is it, is it part of, is it dialing it in more specifically and thus creating the IP? Or is that, no, you do this plan, and then you make your implementation policies?
Just want to clarify, are you referring to the shoreline adaptation program or the coastal access plan that's tied to the SSRAs?
I think the coastal access-
The coastal access and resiliency plan, because it's directly tied to the SSRAs, I don't think it would make sense for the city to do that effort. That document, it has to go to California Coastal Commission, it has to be certified, so that would be part of the IP once we get to that stage.
Okay, and then the shoreline, the other plan, the shoreline plan, what is, how does that fit?
Yeah, so the shoreline adaptation plan, that's policy CRI 5, which the city is obligated to do regardless of the SSRA policies. And so really what the shoreline adaptation program calls for, within 10 years of certification, the city needs to do some technical analysis to determine existing and future conditions, and then create goals and actions that the city's going to take to adapt to the future conditions. There's also some language in this policy that relates to sandy beach areas, so we have to identify where our sandy beach areas are, and we need to find, we need to essentially establish, like, minimum sandy beach widths, and have a monitoring of beach areas and potentially beach adaptation strategies as well to continue to have sandy beaches.
And that plan goes how far into the future?
It's not specified in this policy what that planning horizon is.
Because what you were describing just then sounds to me like the antithesis of, we just keep rebuilding the seawall every time, right? And what council member Big Stick has talked about a lot is, it takes 50 years to address wastewater infrastructure wholesale, moving of wastewater infrastructure. So it's not something like we can just say, in our 20-year limit, we're gonna do that. So, you know, I think it's scope and scale that I'm grappling with here. We want to approve something so that we can be moving it forward, but, you know, we're talking such a relatively short amount of time that these policies would even be in place, and we've got to do this larger planning process for the future of Pacifica. And so I'm truly struggling with how to put those pieces together.
What I was gonna say, I think, I mean, all those goals, and I think going back to what was done in the adaptation plan, some of which was in here before and got cut out, are like the special goals per part of town, right? Because they'll be different, the strategies in Manor and the strategies in Sharp Park, right? So that's part of what you have to define, but, and then within all of those, there are short-term, medium-term, and long-term, right? So for Sharp Park, the short-term is to build a new seawall, right? The longer-term is to start thinking about where the pump station's gonna go, and, you know, what it's gonna cost to, you know, flip our sewers around to drain the other way. So, I mean, and then starting to have those plans and dates and things, then that gives us projects that we can start to apply for SB 7272, right? So that's, that's part of the extra work that we need so that we can start qualifying for that funding.
Right, and so thank you for bringing that up. If we don't have an LCLUP approved, we can't apply for that funding.
Right.
And we don't have the money to do the things we need to do regardless of SSRA or not, just pretend we didn't even need to do anything for the coastal commission, like, pretend they didn't even exist. We just have our city, our people, our areas, we need to take care of business. And we don't have the money at all. We've been working on advocating and da-da-da with Army Corps for a really long time, but there are funds available today through the Ocean Protection Council and through the coastal commission for planning grants and for implementation projects. But the trigger, the key to accessing that is an LCLUP. That's the reality, people. So, you know, I hope it doesn't sound like I'm saying one thing and doing another, or not standing by my words, because I would hate to be playing into that notion. What I'm trying to do is find a way, a path forward for this town that has 50/50. And, you know, 50/50, and truly, take your balance scale out, means you stay put right here, and you don't do anything, right? So I want us to move forward, that's always been my desire, and I feel like there is a way to do that with this LCLUP. I know it's not perfect, but we're searching for perfect, and gosh, we haven't done anything in 44 years. What makes you think we're gonna do perfect the first time out? I think what I'm concerned about is not doing harm. That is, that is just like the phrase of the week for me, not doing harm, you know? I hadn't conceptualized it that way. And so I guess what I'm trying to say is, I think there's two or three areas that I have significant concerns about that I've expressed tonight. I don't know if anything can be done about my concerns, because it sounds like, and I wrote it in my notes, deal breaker, deal breaker. I feel like the things I'm concerned about are not negotiable, and yet everything's negotiable. So I feel like what I want is to put forward a plan that has a couple of, you know, these are the things we like, these are the things, the council's not happy about this, and this, and this, like, a limited number of things. We could name 25 things we're not happy about. If we do a survey of the community, it could be 250, I'm sure. But we gotta do something to move forward. And in the course of that, and in the, you know, somewhat urgency, I know 10 meetings later doesn't sound too urgent to you, but it is, in timescale of Pacifica, we are moving pretty fast, relatively speaking. I don't want to make a misstep. That's why I keep asking these questions over and over about the waivers, and I don't want to do harm to our citizens by putting policies in this plan that then their hands are tied, because we were in having an urgent desire to get an LCLUP in, and the downsides for our citizens end up harming them more than not doing it at all. And those are the things I'm weighing right now.
I'd like to try to focus the council on what the next step is going to be, what's the direction to staff. There's many different avenues or options, there's a lot of big thoughts that the council has discussed tonight, so I want to get some clear direction, and then depending on what that direction is, format for what will come back, if anything's gonna come back to the council. There's, you know, one option, and I conferred with the team during the break, is that, is that we bring back a clear redlined version based on the last version of the LCLUP that the council adopted, which was October of 2023. That's the base document, and we show all of the changes that have happened since then, minus formatting changes, which would make it convoluted. So that would be a clear redline version of what the council could consider submitting to the coastal commission. And then we bring that back, and the council can discuss final revisions, and either accept them and submit, or direct us to withdraw our LCLUP submittal. And, you know, so there's avenues there. Timing, I don't know about when we'd be able to bring that back. It might not be for a couple months, particularly if it involves consultate, further consultation with coastal staff. We have to figure that out. I know there's various staff availability and leave and other issues that are built in here. Or, you know, the council could decide tonight to withdraw the LCLUP and direct us to bring that resolution back. And I heard other comments about revisiting to an older version of the LCLUP, which is essentially withdrawing this one and starting over with a new submittal. So I'm just trying to get some direction about what the council wants to do with this major initiative.
Well, I appreciate the options that you laid out. It's always very helpful, sometimes even helpful for us to, like, read them on screen sometimes, right? I think it would be, I wish we were making a decision tonight, one way or another, I think just because I'm just so, like, oh, done with this, but, but I do think that our community needs an opportunity to see that document. And I hate it that I have to say that, Ed, I hate it that I have to say that, but I really do think that they deserve an opportunity to read through the whole thing and for us to do the same. Thoughts?
I also wanted to make a decision tonight.
Yeah.
I really did. I, I'm tired, and it's long. I mean, I've done it for, because we submitted when nobody else was on council and I was, so I've really been going through it for a long time. And the changes, and there's so many changes all the time. If it could be consistent, I could see us putting it through with, you know, some changes, but it's not consistent. It keeps, these major things keep changing, and it's difficult for us, and it's difficult for the community, and I just, it's hard.
Yeah, I think about all the people that came to our first meeting and how it's dwindled and dwindled, it's just too much.
Now it's in.
You know, it's too weedy, it's just too much.
Three, there's three.
I know. No, I mean, I don't want to drop it, I don't want to go back to an old version, I think, I think we're close. I'd like to see it all in front and read it one more time and make sure, I'd like to hear from the coastal commission on these few things. I don't want to wait too long, because we have an election, and I want to make sure we do this and finish this, the five of us.
Please.
Yeah. And, but I do still, I would like to see the SRA, SSRAS policies highlighted. I don't think it's that hard to take them out. I'm still having trouble with them, I'm not ready to debate them tonight, because I'm just too tired, but I think we need to have that discussion about what it looks like with and without.
And do you think we need to go back that far with a full redline version from, you know, that's, it seems so extensive.
I didn't even hear what he said, how far back.
Since October 23.
Ms. Cervantes can chime in on what some of the complexities are, but if you step back and look at it, there's a version of the LCLUP the council adopted, and we resubmitted to coastal. That's the baseline version, and all the changes that we've been working on in the last year are to that document, essentially. And so that's the cleanest way. Make no mistake, any kind of comprehensive track changes version is an immense amount of staff work. And just as it is now, I'll share with the council, I was talking with Ms. Cervantes, the estimate of staff time is that for every hour spent in council meetings on the LCLUP, an average of about six, seven, or eight hours is spent by staff. So if we're in a six-hour meeting, that's 36 hours of staff time that goes in. So it's never-ending, there's a huge, you always hear me talk about this, there's a huge list of council priorities that are not getting done because of this process continuing. And, you know, the STR conversation with coastal is not gonna happen with this continuing on, we're just not gonna get to that, and, because there's all kinds of non-discretionary stuff that the planning staff needs to process, and, you know, we don't have a full-time planning director either, and we're community development director. So anyways, but, point, point being is that just working up a clean, comprehensive, strike-through version is gonna take time. Further discussions with coastal staff, that's at least a month, just to get a meeting on the books with coastal staff, with council, with the executive director, with everyone that needs to be in the room together, that's at least a month. So, you know, we're looking at some time before we can bring this back to council. Not to mention, we have only five regular meetings before the council reorganization meeting in the beginning of December, so, and when we have some major items, you know, that have to come before the council coming up as well. So there's a lot there to try to fit it in, so.
So I think our next meeting, when we do all this, let's really try to finish, and if we can start early, if we can not have a long closed session before, because we're just tired, right? It's just too many hours. And I think we can all put in that effort.
Tiger?
Yeah.
I will say that, what, I just want to get clarity, that the direction is to move forward essentially with the LCLUP that was adopted by the council in 2023 as the original, and then all the changes since then. There was also discussion about eliminating SRAs by two council members now, and that discussion would require most likely a withdrawal and then a whole new process.
I think so, too.
And so that's not what the council is directing us to, because the SRAs at this point, and I don't know, I should defer to the deputy director before, you know, before I speak, but let me speak, and then Ms. Cervantes, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But the way I view it, the SSRA, the SSRAs are so embedded in this whole, total document now, that it's not as simple as just eliminating that chapter.
I mean, I had noted, and I think Stephanie did also, like, exactly which policies mention them, so.
Let me put it another way, that is not something that we can do in the timeline that the city manager just discussed in a couple of months. That will be a much longer process, in my view, unless, you know, the city manager and the deputy director disagree and they think they can do it sooner. I'm just, I'm just telling you, that is just my initial impression, and maybe we should have the deputy director speak to that.
Yeah, so I'll just add, it's not as simple as just going in and deleting any references to SSRAs, because as we've previously discussed, some of the other policies have been rewritten with the intent that the SSRAs would be applicable in the city. So it would require going through all the policies and essentially doing minor tweaks, maybe some bigger tweaks to those policies to ensure that, you know, the intent is not to protect the SSRAs or benefit the SSRAs.
First of all, I'd like to make a motion to extend to 11:40.
Second.
The motion to extend the meeting to 11:40 made by council member Big Stick and seconded by council member Beer passes unanimously.
Secondly, I do not have interest in pulling out the SSRAs at this time, but what I do have interest in is having an articulation as to what happens in terms of our planning efforts if we were to remove the SSRAs. And I don't, you know, think that y'all have the appetite to hear that or discuss that tonight, but I think that that's what's missing is, oh, if we don't have SSRAs, what does that look like in terms of our planning efforts? There's a longer conversation around, you know, our planning documents that don't get activated if we don't have an updated LCP. activated if we don't have an updated LCP. And so I feel a sense of urgency around that, but it's 15 years in, so. But also what do those planning efforts look like in relation to not having SSRAs? And I think that that needs to be articulated. What I've heard is that predominantly we'd like to take a stab at passing the thing, although I hear the reticence towards the SSRAs. What I'm not sure of is I hear that there are certain potential deal breakers and I want those clearly articulated so that if we need to have that conversation with coastal before our next meeting so that we conceivably could pass this, that it's very specifically articulated. These are the things I need to know from coastal if I am going to feel comfortable passing this thing, period. Whatever that list looks like. And, um.
You mean right now, you want to know that?
Yeah.
By 11:40?
Well, we could always extend longer.
Like to midnight?
Like to midnight.
While she's looking for that, did, did you find an answer to the tsunami SSMs raising buildings?
Um, no, we did not take a break.
Okay. Poor thing. Okay. So that's an outstanding question for next.
Hmm.
And so I think that if we're coming back, we should come back with those questions ready to be answered and then we can continue the conversation from there. I think the premise of going through the entire matrix as close to line by line as our stomachs could tolerate has been completed as of tonight. And I think that we're ready to have the robust conversation in general now that we've been extraordinarily specific. And I think that we all need a good night's rest and maybe a month for coastal to process our deepest concerns going into that conversation. But I think that it sounds like we are ready to have that conversation and then decide whether or not we're activating our work or continuing it to a council to be determined.
Right. Okay, well, for me, one of the biggest stumbling blocks was the, the substantial structural And so I feel like we've gotten more clarity on it, but it generally, and even including the amendment tonight, the thing about the plywood underlayment, I feel like there's a constant limiting and limiting of what is, what the people who live in Pacifica, who own property that's in the coastal zone can do. And if you don't live in the coastal zone, you can do it all you want, but if you live there, you can't. And, and the issue is ur, the urgency or the, the, how urgently these potential hazards are coming. So you can't do this thing to your property now for something that's happening in 50 years. That's what I'm talking about. I feel like this, the, the SS, the SSM is very restrictive and limiting. So I'm not saying it's a deal breaker, but I'm saying it's one of the biggest concerns. The discussion we had tonight, I don't know if there's any way to, I think I heard the city man, city attorney say you were going to try to do something about bullet point six.
Yes, we will talk.
That is still an issue. Waivers, that is the biggest issue for me. One thing that I want to get personally is the, um, there are some other disclosures, there's real estate disclosures that exist for sea level rise. And I, I think that's what, so I'd love to, personally, I just want to look at that because, you know, it feels like we're the only ones doing disclosures. They're already existing, but I don't know what the scope of them is. And I know it's not our job, but I'm personally going to look at that.
Well, are, are you asking what are the disclosures that the coastal commission has already required?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I know what they require at their, on their own in form of appeal. And that's basically what they're asking us to put into our LCLUP.
Correct.
And so.
You want samples of those?
I'd like to know what other recently approved LCLUPS say about it.
Get that.
Now, I get it, they probably didn't have SSRAs in them.
Right.
So, but I think there is a direct relationship between those two things. And I feel like our people are getting caught in the crossfire. Oh, you want to have armoring for a little while, maybe 20 years? You're going to do all these waivers.
That's a suggestion.
Right? Do you see what I mean? So those, to me, those are the biggest, those are my biggest ones.
And I would like to understand the, the policies that are added because of SSRAs, but that aren't specific SSRA policies. I want to know what those are too, because, yeah. Is that?
There are none. What, what I had said previously was some of the policies had been rewritten, tweaked in order to allow the SSRAs to ensure that there's no, that there's internal consistency, things like that, that there's the benefit.
There's like a sentence that, but, but this doesn't apply in the SSRA.
So there, there's that, but also, you know, some of the other policies, I'm trying to think of an example, um, and to avoid inconsistency internally with what we're seeing in, in some of the policies versus other policies, they, they've been tweaked. And so it's not that we've added policies, it's that we've ensured that there's no internal inconsistencies in the policies as they relate to the SSRAs. So it's, it shouldn't be anything major, but we would have to go back. If, if the direction is to remove the SSRAs, we would need to go back to a previous version of the policy that shows, that shows that language before we tweaked it to avoid inconsistencies to ensure that the SSR policies are beneficial. It's, it's, it's possible, but it would require work and it would require the council to direct us to, to do that work.
Is there a way to give us a, like the highlights, you know, a short list? Because I, when you say there are no policies that are in there because the SSRAs are there, I, I'm not sure I agree. It seems like the coastal policy that has to be done and some projects have to be underway before the SSRA policies can take place? That didn't exist prior to SSRA, right?
Yes, but.
Coastal Access and Resiliency Program.
Yes, but that policy is directly tied to the SSRAs.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, so.
Well, that's an easy one to pull out.
So, I'm trying to figure out the, so section 6.9, that's the Special Shoreline Resiliency Area Policies. All the policies in that section are specific to the SSRAs. The policy you're referring to for the Coastal Access Resiliency Program is in that section.
Okay.
So I, I think you provided a list before of what policies related to the SSRAs. So maybe just make sure that's in the staff report again. That'd be helpful.
Yeah. Okay. I'm not going to ask for anything else.
Mary or Sue?
I agree, giving up rights when, when we have a coastal expert who comes and says, well, sea level rise is the size of two quarters on their sides. And some places you look and you, and they say sea level rise in the last 20 years, zero, zero. So these people are preparing, like Sue said, for something that could happen in 100 years. They're putting their houses, I, I know I've said this before, but the value of their house, the fact that they may not be able to get mortgages, the fact that they may not be able to get insurance because we placed them in this SSRA, um, what is going to happen? We don't know that. We're not mortgage people. We don't know if it's going to change the value, but if you can't get insurance, you have nothing. So it's the unknowns for me about the SS, the SRAs that keeps haunting my brain.
Is there a specific ask from staff to talk to coastal about a thing and bring it back to us that you're contemplating? Because I, I'm hearing a lot that I could engage in a conversation with when it comes back, but I think we're giving direction as to what information do we need specifically to be able to have that conversation.
I know, those, those things I just said can't be answered. They can't be answered.
We did ask those questions already and there weren't.
I've asked them several times.
And also, Sue, it is about storms, right? And surge.
Right. Oh, I'm not, I'm not denying that we have climate.
And erosion.
No, no, I know you're not. No, I know, but it's not just sea level rising.
Right, right.
And so erosion, I guess, really, I think.
Erosion is our biggest problem.
And storm surge and flood.
Right. And overflow.
But not tsunami.
Can I, can I clarify about, about format? Is, is the council in agreement that the format that this should be brought back in is the track changes version based on the 2023? And including, you know, you're going to continue to discuss about hazard disclosure policy or particular language, but what we will include in the track changes version is what we have today. And then council can discuss and make revisions. And, and at that next meeting, to be determined when that would occur, the, you know, there's, there's various different actions the council can take at the conclusion of that.
So we're going to continue this meeting to a date not certain? No?
We don't need to.
We don't need to take any action.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Makes it easier.
Like we did with the general plan, and I know it was big because it had so many attachments. I remember all that drama of trying to break it up into sections and all that. I don't think this document requires that, but remember how we posted it with the clean and the track changes version? So people could, the public could check it and look at it fully.
We can have, so the council's requesting a clean version and a track changes version?
As part of the packet.
As part of the packet.
Right. Because there, I mean, unless I'm misunderstanding, if we, if we accept all the changes that have been made, that's the clean version, right? I mean, it's like turning off chat changes.
Well, that's the future.
And accepting them.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct?
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
And that's what we're planning to do.
Yeah.
Part of the staff report.
Right. And so that's posted in advance of the meeting, so everybody can look at it.
It'll be posted at, when the staff report is posted.
Right.
So if you want it.
Or earlier if possible. I know that's.
That's another discussion with staff, but we, we generally post, you know, the Wednesday before it's the council.
I move to extend to 11:50.
Oh, my God. Okay, well, can we? We're done.
We're done.
Are we done?
Wait, I just had one other.
Yeah, I moved to extend to 11:50 if you have one more thing.
No, I, I'll.
It's 11:39 right now.
11:39.
Quick.
We have till 11:45?
I, I have, I have one more question about format, so.
Extend to 11:40.
My second.
Whoa. Okay.
That passes unanimously extending to 11:50.
There was at least one council member that indicated a preference to also see a matrix of changes. I wanted to verify whether that's a request or not.
No.
Okay.
No, it's okay.
No, I, I know, I think where we're going is good.
Okay. Um, sorry, the, the thing, I just want to make sure it's clear and maybe it's just written in the staff report or highlighted. If, if there are certain policies that we're, we didn't agree with the coastal commission that we're still suggesting an alternative modification, like can those be highlighted so we can kind of track how many of those we have? Maybe we don't have any right now, but.
We do.
I don't even remember.
We do.
Well, and we might add some more.
I think the council does, but what do you say?
Um, so initial response is that's what we've tried to show in the previously attached redline versions of the LCP. So if you look at the August 12 version, you, most pages will have three different sets of redlines. So those three different sets are the general plan consisting of these changes that the council adopted, the suggested modifications that coastal staff recommended March of 2023, and all the alternative modifications.
Wait, but some of the alternative modifications were coastal commission modifications later, right? So.
Yes. And so any changes that we've made during the conversations with coastal staff, we've included them as alternative modifications in green. And so I think what, what staff had previously discussed of having that, that baseline October 23 version versus what would, we would demonstrate, or what we would have for the next report would be all the changes same color, so you can just see the difference between the 2020, uh, October 2023 version and the version that we're asking you to adopt.
But I would still like to know where we disagree with the coastal commission.
So you remember.
So that, that, I, I will just add that, that that's a level of complication in a track changes version that is going to be super challenging for us to figure out.
Were you asking for?
Maybe it doesn't have to be in the document, maybe it's just something you highlight in the staff report.
Remember when we got the letter before this last letter? And they, and there were some recommendations and you guys came back and said, we do not recommend that you accept these mods because they're, now, maybe I'm wrong, maybe that's what this whole second letter was about, was trying to get those resolutions.
We, we worked through all of those ideas.
So that's what, oh, okay, see, that's the through line I didn't have. So there aren't any, is what I'm hearing. From staff's point of view, there aren't any outstanding ones staff doesn't agree with.
Are there any points in this document where we're pushing back on coastal commission's recommendation at this point, or have we reconciled all the differences?
We've agreed on everything thus far.
Okay.
Okay.
Then that's not.
To clarify.
We're there.
It's not that we've agreed to everything. We've discussed and worked out with them a resolution to maybe what they wanted and what we wanted. So it's, it's not that we just took their revisions wholesale. There's been, definitely been some back and forth.
We've reconciled.
Right. But all of those have been reconciled.
Okay. Then I take that back, we don't need it. Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Before we, before I adjourn, I want to thank all of our staff for working so hard and then to not have an ending, which you expected. And it's, it's hard for us too. I adjourn.